Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for October 21st, 2024. If you'll please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja, Conklin, Corona Salveano, Devlin, and Rethel.
Here.
And we do have our quorum.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
So the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person comment, a public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment, and the duration of your comment will be two minutes this evening. And members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date and agenda or off-agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H Street, Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
Thank you. That brings us to the contested portion of our agenda this evening. Will you please call item number one?
And your item number one this evening is PLNP 2024-00123. It's for zoning ordinance amendment and administrative amendments. And it is, it's not the environmental document, is that it's exempt.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Emma James. I'm an associate planner here tonight to present the 2024 Massage Ordinance Zoning Code Amendment. We would note that prior to the hearing, you were distributed a revised version of this presentation, in which we added slides detailing public outreach efforts that were conducted after the date of drafting the materials for this hearing. The amendment brought forth is to Chapters 1, 3, and 6 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code to streamline the review of massage establishments and providers. The amendment is being processed as part of a county code update that will impact Chapter 4.36, Business Regulations Pertaining to Massage. This amendment is countywide, and the decision body for this item is the Board of Supervisors. The chapters to be amended are Chapter 1, General Provisions, Chapter 3, Use Regulations, and Chapter 6, Administration. In 2016, the county passed an ordinance which introduced the requirement of a minor use permit, as well as distance and separation requirements for massage establishments. Since the adoption of that ordinance, Planning and Environmental Review has processed zero use permits for massage businesses, as all currently licensed providers and establishments have qualified for one of three exemptions. Those exemptions include sole or dual owner-operator, all providers being California Massage Therapy Council certified, or if the massage services are offered incidental to a permitted primary use. Incidental is defined as less than 25% of the gross floor area of the business. And examples of that could include salons, spas, health clubs, or medical offices. Currently, there are 137 active business licenses for massage in commercial locations and 310 active licenses for home occupation providers. This zoning code amendment is part of a larger county effort in collaboration with the Business Licensing Division, Finance Department, as well as County Council and the Sheriff's Department to address ongoing concerns about illegal activity that has occurred at some of these establishments. A summary of amendments to Chapter 1 are in Section 1.9.3, Nonconforming Use of Land or Buildings. We're proposing that the discontinuation of a nonconforming use of massage establishment would occur in one of three cases: A, if the special business license is allowed to lapse for a period of 30 days or longer; if the general business license has lapsed for a period of 90 days or longer; or if the ownership of the business is transferred. These timeframes were requested by the Department of Finance Business Licensing Division and are consistent with the draft county code provisions. Massage establishments with certificates of nonconforming use will also be allowed to continue to operate if they continually comply with all of the conditions in their certificate, and this is consistent with all legal nonconforming businesses. The application process for new certificates of nonconforming use for massage will include a referral to the appropriate CPAC group, as well as notice to property owners within 500 feet of the establishment. We've also added a provision for the Planning Commission to reinstate a nonconforming status, and that is applicable to any nonconforming use, versus the first three bullets on this slide are specific to massage. Amendments to Chapter 3, Use Regulations, are first and foremost that massage would no longer require a use permit. We're also amending the zoning districts in which massage would be allowed to no longer include industrial zoning districts. Massage is currently permitted in M1 and M2, however, there are no active business licenses in either of those zones at this time. We're proposing that in CO and BP zoning districts, massage establishments only be allowed as an incidental use, which again is less than 25% of the gross floor area. And the use standards for massage will refer to county code Section 4.36, and massage will be removed from Table 3.7 of the zoning code, which details distance and separation requirements for sensitive uses. Amendments to Chapter 6 are in Section 6.5.2, Certificate of Nonconforming Use, and they are mainly for consistency with the changes to Chapters 1 and 3 pertaining to the timeframe to obtain a certificate of nonconforming use, as well as the time period for the use to be deemed discontinued. The general required findings for a certificate of nonconforming use have been moved from Chapter 1 to Chapter 6 of the zoning code, which is a more appropriate location for them to exist in the zoning code. Like I said before, a provision has been added for the Planning Commission to reinstate a nonconforming status, and the administrative procedures for that reinstating will be contained in Chapter 6. We're also proposing administrative amendments that would impact our zoning code user guide, website information, and any application forms pertaining to massage. Planning and Environmental Review has conducted public outreach in the month of September. We held three CPAC meetings at the Fair Oaks, Cordova, and Arden Arcade communities. We mainly received clarifying questions regarding the background of the prior zoning code amendment, which introduced the minor use permit requirement. We also had some clarifying questions regarding the reasons for moving regulations from the zoning code to the county code. We were able to help people understand that the county has a better ability to monitor, regulate, and promptly enforce regulations pertaining to massage with those regulations existing in the county code. We also heard some concerns regarding business licensing fee increases, but generally an overall support for moving regulations from the zoning code to the county code. Business Licensing has been conducting their own outreach to massage providers. They've held a meeting that occurred on September 27th of this year, and they have another meeting scheduled at the end of this month. The comments they've received thus far particularly centered around the fee for a certificate of nonconforming use.
Ms. James, can we have a pause for just a second?
Oh, yes.
I've just been informed Metro, we don't have access.
Recording progress.
That nobody can see or hear right now on the Metro connection, so just give us one pause for just a second, and we'll resume.
Okay. It's okay.
I think we have them all. She made it at the beginning.
I'm not sure if they'll make you start over or not, but the chat, you know. That's all right. If I have to do it again, I've done it so many times.
Yeah.
So. The comments, just make sure that you mention that the comments are presenting. We're just focused on the zoning code update. Because they might have other comments. Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, Ms. James, we are ready to resume.
Should I just pick up where I left off?
Yeah, pick up where you left off.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Sounds good. So Business Licensing has been conducting their own outreach. They've held meetings with, or a meeting with massage providers on September 27th of this year, and they have another meeting scheduled for October 30th. The comments they've received thus far are mainly concerns around the certificate of nonconforming use fee that will be imposed, and some expression of wanting a fee waiver to potentially be incorporated into this set of amendments. However, only the Board of Supervisors can waive fees for entitlements, so the Planning Commission does have the option of providing that recommendation to the board. They also heard concerns regarding potentially existing primary massage businesses in the BP zone, wanting to relocate to a different location also in the BP zone in the future, and being limited to incidental use only, even with obtaining a certificate of nonconforming use. And the current proposal is that any existing business in BP that does obtain a certificate of nonconforming use would not be able to transfer that to a different location in the same zone. And that's consistent with any entitlement, that it's site-specific and runs with the After this hearing, staff will finalize a set of zoning code amendments to present to the board. We have a hearing tentative scheduled for December 10th of this year. The county code update process is running concurrently, and if the board decides to approve the zoning code amendment, massage businesses will work directly with the Finance Department for their licensing. If the board decides to deny the amendment, massage will still require a use permit and be subject to distance and separation requirements unless they qualify for one of those three exemptions that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Staff's, oh, pardon me. Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission make the following recommendation to the board: to determine the notice of exemption is adequate and complete, and to approve the zoning ordinance amendment to Chapters 1, 3, and 6 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code. Thank you, and we're now available for any questions or comments.
Commissioners, questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Conklin?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the presentation. As I understand it, cities and counties and local jurisdictions typically are somewhat restricted by either the Business and Professions Code or the Government Code, and as far as our ability to restrict operations and ordinances for certified therapists in this space. As I understand it, the certifying body, CAMTC, is kind of volunteer-based. And so I guess my question is, I understand we have a robust kind of list of grounds for permit suspensions, but trying to get a sense of your comments earlier about the, you know, prohibiting the transfer of ownership while an action is maybe under county review or pending county outcome, are we delineating that and, or at least prohibiting that transfer until the outcome of a county review?
I may refer to Wendy for this. I might need a little bit more clarification on the action you're referring to. Are you referring to inspections and actions that are currently occurring by the Sheriff Department and the Business Licensing Inspection? Those are outside of the zoning code purview. So unless Todd has some knowledge of that, that, I do know that what, my limited knowledge is, is that when they go in for an inspection, depending on the level of infraction, the license may, may be immediately suspended or revoked, or there may be put on warning, but there is still an appeal process that they're able to go through. And it is a pretty quick turnaround from the inspection to the appeal hearings and whatnot, which is where there's a big difference between county provisions and, say, revocation of a use permit process.
Okay, thank you. And I guess in that same track, are we at least allowed to prohibit the issuance of a new permit in the same location as one that's closed in the last one or two years? I'm looking to prevent rotating doors.
So currently, the way the process works is that they apply for a business license through Department of Finance, and that license is sent to Planning for review, and we look to see if they meet one of those exemptions. If the board adopts our provisions in the zoning code, there will no longer be the use permit requirement. We found that pretty much everybody indicates that they meet one of the exemptions. Whether or not that's actually the case is kind of what we're finding out. So with the adopted amendments as being proposed right now in the zoning code, similar to many jurisdictions around the state, zoning would no longer regulate massage. Massage would be almost entirely regulated through county code, with the exception of what zone districts it may be permitted in. And so that would be somewhat the limitation of the zoning code, is just the zones that we would allow massage to occur in. All the other standards would be located within county code, and I am not sure right now what their provisions are. They have not released a formal public draft yet of the county code. We've seen some internal drafts of it, so I can't speak to whether or not they'd be allowed to reestablish under new ownership at the same location or not.
Okay. And then are we treating in-house therapists any differently with the fee schedule than those conducting out-call services?
Those are all part of the county code regulations and not part of zoning code.
Okay.
Other questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Borja?
Thank you so much, both of you, for a pretty illustrative walkthrough. I think one thing that I was trying to really read about on your staff report that I may have missed a little bit is really the interaction between this effort and the Sheriff's effort to hopefully bring down illicit massage parlors that unfortunately may have resulted to human trafficking or other sex trafficking or any other kind of negative business practice. Now, Sunnyvale and other cities that have had a high disproportionate of these types of ghosts or these types of illegal establishments have also passed certain ordinances that required actual legal massage parlors to not have dim lighting or not have specific blockage on their windows, things that they've seen that they've worked for their local police to actually say that would discourage illegal behavior. Is that something that we hopefully want to model, or is this, again, primarily more of the application process, and we just hope that we may be correct or deter behavior that way?
The preliminary draft of the county code that Planning has received did address things such as lighting windows. I think there were some things about living facilities, types of showers. There was a whole laundry list of items that they were looking to include in the county code that may not be currently in the code to try to address some of the unfortunate illicit activity that they've found during some of their investigations.
So it would be, it would be reflected to that. I think Sunnyvale, you know, they prevented obscuring front windows, not putting on certain locks on certain doors, like you said, living situations, because unfortunately, some of these, primarily women, I think from the news, are unfortunately have had to live there and work there and provide those services. So that's something that you guys are hopefully working with the law enforcement office as well.
Correct, and that was one of the reasons why, when we were looking to what zone districts to allow for massage establishments, we decided that it was probably not a good idea to allow for those types of businesses in our industrial zones, where there isn't as much pedestrian and vehicle traffic and more likely to encourage illicit activity.
Understood. Thank you.
If you, can you kind of walk me through the certificate of nonconforming use? Because I guess where I've, where I've seen it is, you're just kind of incidentally end up in a nonconforming use. So you don't necessarily need to go, like, say, you're in a residence and the zoning changes there, or the business, my understanding was, is if the business was permitted before and the zoning changes on that parcel, the business doesn't have to go and get a certificate. They're just kind of automatically a nonconforming use going forward. But walk me through the process here, because I'm a little confused on how somebody wouldn't be allowed to keep operating the business that they've been able to do.
So in some jurisdictions, they may have a procedure for grandfathering in, where the business does not have to do anything. Sacramento County, for at least the last several decades, has had a certificate of nonconforming use process, wherein whenever the zoning code has been amended by the board or a new special planning area has been adopted, businesses are typically given up to five years to obtain their certificate of nonconforming use. So it's not something that they are automatically granted. They need to apply for it. And that is where we've received some comments through the outreach that Business Licensing Department of Finance has done regarding our fee for, fee for that. So it's not automatic. They do have to apply for it. There's a time limit within which a business needs to apply, or they don't have the ability to obtain the, what we call the NCS, Certificate of Nonconforming Use. So within our zoning code already, there are provisions where if a business has either closed its doors, vacated, in other words, or has not kept their business license active, they lose their nonconforming status. Right now, most businesses are given up to five years to obtain their certificate of nonconforming use. The proposal here, which is similar to the 2016 provision, is that for massage specifically, they have one year to obtain their certificate of nonconforming use. Massage does require a special business license, which they have to obtain every year, and so they would be put on notice if this ordinance is passed, that that would be a requirement for them, and that they would have a year to, to get that certificate.
And that fee is, I'm seeing some of the comments that came in, is that about $1,000 permit?
It's a little over $1,000. It's just under $1,100 currently.
Okay. And then comparing massage to other personal, well, I guess staying on that for a second, the only businesses that would, this would apply to, we have none in the industrial zone, so there's nothing there. I don't believe we have any in the CO zone, but if they were in the CO zone or in the BP zone and they're operating more than 25% of the square footage, then they would need to apply for this certificate. So nobody in GC or LC or any other zoning would have to apply for this certificate of nonconforming use.
Correct, and we have gathered information from licensing, and we believe there is approximately 30 businesses that may be operating as independent uses, not associated with a spa, beauty salon, or doctor's office. We would have to do more direct communication with that list to verify that that's the case. That is one of the exceptions that's currently in our zoning code for not requiring the use permit. And in general, in our business professional zone, we have restrictions on other types of personal services, as well as business support services.
And that's what I'm looking in the use tables. It looks like the beauty or barber shop, general personal services. These other personal services that are allowed in BP are restricted to that 25% incidental. So this would make massage kind of more consistent with those. Is that the idea?
Yes, except that they would also have to be incidental to a list of specific uses where the business, the business support services or the beauty salons are 25% of the space. The massage would need to be 25% of either a health club, spa, resort, or doctor's office.
And so one other clarification. So as far as the recommendation tonight, since we have no authority to waive fees, you guys are also looking to us to possibly recommend that to the Board of Supervisors for these 30-ish establishments? Okay. Understood. Any other questions for staff before we move to public comment?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hartman, do we require future applicants to have a CAMTC, the California Massage Sheriff's Council, certification?
If the, if the zoning code amendment and the county code provisions are adopted, then yes, new establishments would have to have that certification. County code is proposing a legacy program for those establishments that currently have their special licenses and their general business licenses, that do not allow those licenses to lapse, to be able to continue operating. So as long as they keep their business licenses active and get their NCS, if one is required, then they would be able to continue operating. But if it was a new business, or even I believe if in county code they were to transfer ownership, then it would be considered a new business and would need to comply with the new county regulations.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move to public comment. I have one speaker request this evening. BJ Pitts, come on up. And then if anybody else would like to address the commission on item number one, if you could fill out a speaker card there in the back there. could fill out a speaker card there in the back there.
I'm BJ Pitts, CMT, and my CAMTC number is 552. I have learned of the possible zoning changes at the Arden Arcade CPAC meeting in September. There was a workshop held, which there was no real back and forth. It was an announcement stating that only massage establishments may operate as if in a 25% or less of another business within unless you got the nonconforming certificate. This in effect will no longer allow sole providers, which are the, is a person who's only one person on the lease, one person in the office, and is the only person that sees clients. I have 350 square feet that I lease for mine. I've been there since 1998. For me, now I would have to apply for the nonconforming certificate and the possibility of $1,000 on top of that, which I understand may not happen, but I wanted to bring it out. It is not the massage business that's the problem. We all want the illicit massage businesses closed. They are imposters. The SAC County Sheriff's Department are doing a great job closing them down. I and others are working with the Department of Finance in order to close loopholes and strengthen the business and special business license ordinance and application process. And that application process is going to be a big change, and we really feel that this will deterrent the imposters. And the zoning department has not worked enough with stakeholders in making the proposed changes. I do see in the supporting documents that they will allow grandfathering and that we can apply and they will recommend non-payment. That would help. With this said, I feel that sole providers to run their own businesses, the small spaces that are in the business professional zones should be allowed. The excessive fee is being asked for is punitive. Please do not stuff out the sole provider of massage therapy in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County. The sole providers are so beneficial to the health and well-being of all our communities.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. All right. Next up, we have Terry Seikotis. Sorry if I butchered your name.
That's my handwriting. You got the last name really good, but first is Tony. My name's Tony Seikotis. I've been a professional massage therapist for over 30 years, and I don't have a lot to add to what BJ said, but I did want to clarify a couple of things. With the passage of AB 1147 in 2014, Sacramento County has complete control over the regulation of massage establishments without constraint. What they do not have is there are constraints on what you can require of a massage practitioner. If they have a CAMTC certificate, there are certain other things the county can't ask of them in addition in order to practice in the jurisdiction. But for the business, the county has had complete control with no constraints since 2014, unaffected by CAMTC certification. Does that make sense? Okay. And the other thing that was brought up, the current ordinance does prevent massage establishments, as it exists today, prevent a massage establishment from opening where one has been closed. In the current iteration of the ordinance being considered, they're considering lengthening the amount of time that it would be not possible for another massage business to open where one was closed for illegal activity. And just to reiterate what BJ said, that $1,100 particularly for a sole practitioner is a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on item number one this evening? We'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to deliberation. Anyone want to kick us off this evening? Commissioner Cronus, Sabaniano? Sure. I don't think your mic's on.
It says it's, is it on? Okay. Yeah, if you can speak a little bit to what was mentioned in public comment, I'm curious, is the $1,100 an annual or a one-time fee?
The certificate of noncompliance fee, the approximately $1,100 fee, is a one-time fee per that location. So as was mentioned during Emma's presentation, if there's an existing business, for example, in the BP zone district and they obtain their NCS, it runs in perpetuity as long as they remain in compliance with their conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Devlin?
Could you maybe kind of walk through the process of, could you maybe walk through the process? Is it on? It says it's on.
All right. Thank you. Could you maybe walk through the process of the relocation or the business moving that is a nonconforming use?
We would not allow a nonconforming use to move to a BP site as a primary provider. They would have to meet the requirements under the zoning code of being incidental. So they would have to look to lease space from a health club, a doctor's office, a resort, or one of the permitted, permitted uses that they can be ancillary to. And that would be the same for anybody that has a planning entitlement. A planning entitlement cannot be transferred from one site to another. It's site-specific.
And could a new business move into a nonconforming location as, that existing use is relocating or moving elsewhere or closing?
As currently proposed, our section in Chapter 1.93 indicates that you lose your nonconforming status with business transfer. So that would be something that your commission could consider. We do have situations where we have allowed other types of businesses that have a certificate of nonconforming use to transfer ownership as long as that ownership occurs within a certain timeframe and there isn't a lapse of business license. So the minute that a business closes or changes hands, they need to obtain a new business license, and we start the clock at that point in time for the time period within which they can reestablish. As currently written, though, that would not apply to massage unless a modification is recommended by your commission.
Another quick follow-up. Sorry. The issue of the fee schedule, or at least the proposed hike for the cost of the certificate, have we looked at other cities and counties and jurisdictions throughout the state of similar size to look at other counties of parity? And I'm trying to tee this up for staff here just to kind of accentuate the point.
So Commissioner Copeland, Todd Smith, Plaim Director, I'll respond to that one. We are not proposing, staff is not proposing a fee increase. Our fee schedule for all certificates of nonconforming use right now shows this amount roughly a little bit less than $1,100. What we are cognizant of is the fact that this may be a cost that some of these businesses cannot bear on their own, and we've heard that through their feedback on not just the zoning code amendment, but also on the county code amendments that's being run through our business licensing folks, which is why we want the commission to weigh in and make a recommendation of the board, because the Board of Supervisors is the entity that can reduce or waive those fees.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, or I'll take a swipe at summarizing?
Yeah, just one quick thing. So assume that we pass this and make the changes that staff requested, what would be kind of moving forward two to three years from now? What would be like a measure of success? Like, are we continuing coordinating with a human trafficking council or the sheriff's office? Are we looking at perhaps like a lower incident reporting? Or do we kind of just make the changes now and then hope that behavior just kind of doesn't follow?
Yeah. So what's before you tonight is the zoning code. So the changes in the zoning code are probably not going to make any changes because what we found in adopting the use permit provisions in 2016, because of all the exceptions we had, it didn't prevent the illicit activity. So the hope would be through the county code amendments that we would be able to better regulate and promote good providers versus those that are doing illicit activity. And I believe that they would be able to provide annual reports to the board as requested on the success of the changes or not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Devlin?
Thank you. And this one might be for county council. Provided that this is passed and implemented and, you know, sorry for the hypothetical first of all, but should this be passed and fast-forward for some amount of time, if this body or the Board of Supervisors was to, or staff was to come to a conclusion that we needed to reinstate some of those zoning code changes, what would the, I guess, status be of those folks that were still existing? Would they need to then come back and seek some sort of additional approval? Or would...
If at some point the board or the planning department, community development, decided that these changes aren't effective, they want to try something different, they would again process a new zoning code amendment. Before that, they might do a moratorium, which would freeze, well, maintain the status quo and maybe prevent new uses. But zoning can always be changed.
I'll say where I'm sitting right here. I think the certificate of nonconform use, I understand that business professional districts have less traffic than our other commercial zonings. And because of that issue, they can be targeted for illicit activity, right? That some of these operators will set up in business and professional districts because they're still commercial, but they're not, they're not as trafficked, you know, they don't have as many customers that are in and out of there. And so it makes it an easier place for them to operate. So I understand the concern around the business professional district. Definitely very supportive of not having them in the industrial district, although that doesn't seem to be a big issue, but I don't want to play whack-a-mole here where we move them out of the business professional district and next thing you know, they're in the industrial district. So that being said, I also don't want to disenfranchise any current sole proprietor or multiple, you know, multiple folks that are operating well within the law, that have chosen and signed leases in a business professional district, and they could become nonconforming and still be obligated to pay their lease for three to five years. We really don't know what their lease terms are. And so forcing them to go through a process in one year where they have signed a lease on a space for their own personal business for likely longer than a year doesn't seem like a fair move. So I would be supportive of this as long as we also recommend to the Board of Supervisors the fee waiver. I do think Commissioner Devlin brought up a good point, and I think of it as maybe it's, maybe not the sole proprietor, but maybe where you have two massage therapists that are operating in a business professional district and have done so for a long time. They have an established client base. One of, you know, the older massage therapist decides to retire and sell off the business or transfer the business license over to the younger massage therapist. In that case, what's being proposed wouldn't allow that. And so now that person that may have been operating legally within that district for many years, whose customers are used to going and receiving those services there, aren't able to. So I would lean on the side of getting rid of the ownership of the massage business being transferred as an issue, and just kind of want to get your thoughts on that and how that, whether that would be acceptable to staff, because I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to think through my head of how this could be used by the illicit operator. And I don't, I may be missing something. So would you have significant concerns? Or has the sheriff's department maybe brought up concerns with having that, having that allow that NCS or Certificate of Nonconformance, I'm sure I'm using the right acronym, Certificate of Nonconformance be transferable as long as they were meeting all the requirements?
So I actually have some potential draft language that I can pass out to all of you and read into the record. With regard to the fee, if that is something the commission wants to do, please make it as part of your recommendation, and that would be incorporated into the actual ordinance that the board adopts. But for the changes to the zoning code text, I do have a potential option that would allow for a business to be transferred if that provision was included into the certificate of nonconforming use. So when we received the application, we'd be able to distribute it to the sheriff's department and to the public, and then depending on recommendations from some of those entities, would be able to decide whether that would be allowable in that specific situation or not. Oh, go ahead. Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I also have an extra copy if we need to put it on the overhead projector. Would you like me to put one on the overhead?
Sure. Commissioner Devlin, can you read that out for us?
I'm getting closer.
You want me to read it?
So the part in yellow would be the new portion. The part that's in red is what was currently in your packet. So at the very end, it would say, "Or if ownership of the business, massage enterprise, is transferred unless there is a valid certificate, a nonconforming use on file, that allows for ownership transfer." So that way, we could kind of handle it on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, if the sheriff or anybody had an issue with that, then we would condition it so that it couldn't be transferred.
Sounds good. And then this language is the fee waiver language that's coming up to us, or...
No, the one that's coming up to you is a copy of this. We do not have a copy of the fee waiver language. What we have done in the past is it's been incorporated into the actual ordinance or resolution that the board adopts.
So to add to that, Commissioner Rathel, if the commission desires to recommend waiver of those fees, it would simply be in your motion to the board.
Perfect. I'm happy to get us started here with the discussion and move the staff recommendation with the change to 1.9.3A3 incorporating unless there is a valid certificate of nonconforming use on file that allows for ownership transfer, and also recommending that the businesses that are currently operating within the zones that are changing be allowed a fee waiver to get their certificate of nonconforming use. And now I'll open it up for a discussion before I ask for a vote. If anybody has different thoughts or ideas this evening, I welcome them.
I would like to just thank staff for bringing this forward. This is obviously a very serious subject matter due to its, you know, potential negative consequences as it relates to human trafficking. You know, I guess it feels like we're taking a step to being and adopting something that's maybe more nimble and practical for achieving the results that we want, while at the same time, I feel like, you know, land use-wise, we're kind of giving something up a little bit here, and it's a little bit of a leap of faith for me. I'm happy to support the motion and the second. I guess my only kind of, I like the language. It's better. I worry if it's venturing in the world of being arbitrary. I worry if it's venturing in the world of being arbitrary, but I'll leave that to the brighter minds than me. But I'm happy to support the item.
I'm open to less arbitrary language, too, if you have any ideas.
I need a minute.
Staff, any thoughts on, are you mainly concerned with the idea that it's use on file that allows for ownership transfer?
Well, without a metric, what are we measuring against? You know, is this going to be a judgment based on...
Well, I think the way I'm reading it is if there is a valid certificate of nonconforming use. So if they've lost their certificate of nonconforming use for any reason, or they no longer have their special business license or a business license, then their certificate gets removed, right? And then they no longer have a certificate of nonconforming use to transfer. And so basically, if that action's been taken on the owner or the proprietor of the previous establishment, then there is no certificate to transfer. So you really have to be a good operator in the BP zone going forward to be able to be eligible for the transfer. That's the way I read it.
Yeah. I guess I just read it maybe slightly differently in that there was some discretionary action that would grant the transfer of ownership at the time of issuance of a valid nonconforming use.
Staff, do you see any discretion there? Or is it really just that they have one that's valid on file?
The discretion would probably be in Chapter 6, under the General Findings, where we have a list of general findings that need to be made. And what typically happens with an NCS is we send out to the Sheriff's Department for comment, and they will provide us with recommendations. And so based on their recommendation, that would be when, if they had some concerns, we may not allow for transfer. Oftentimes, we typically get comments from them on beefing up security measures on a lot of our nonconforming uses. The most typical ones that we process are the smoke shops, the hookah lounges, the liquor stores, recycling facilities. And so a lot of those have become nonconforming in the last, since 2015 or more recent. And so Sheriff will provide some guidance to us on their issues they may have had and what types of conditions they would like us to place on the NCS. So we would be probably looking more towards them for that direction on if they had concern with allowing transfer or not.
And is that at the time of the issuance of the nonconforming use or at the time of the request of change of ownership?
It would be built into the actual not certificate of nonconforming use. So they would have to apply. When they apply, we distribute out to various county departments for comments. We also would send out to the Community Planning Advisory Council that the project is located in and property owners within 500 feet. And based on the comments that we receive from those entities, whether it's the public, the Sheriff's Department, or through the CPAC, we would draft conditions accordingly for that specific business, similar to what happens with a use permit or any other planning entitlement. Conditions are tailored to the individual situation.
And then that's a staff decision that's made that's appealable to this body?
Correct, as the BZA.
As the BZA. Close to this body, yes.
Okay. I think I'm, I think I'm okay.
Okay. Any other concerns or changes before I call the question? All right, please call the rule.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Hi.
And Rathal.
Yes.
And the motion carries as amended.
Thank you. Please call item number two.
Item number two this evening is PLMP 2023-00255. It's for a conditional use permit, special development permit and design review. It is located at 7991 Sunnyside Way, approximately 342 feet south of the intersection of Carlisle Avenue and Sunnyside Way in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Rathal and Planning Commissioners. My name is Christian Balthazar. I'm an associate planner with Sacramento County Planning Environmental Review and lead planner for this project. The subject site is located at 7991 Sunnyside Way in the Vineyard Community. The site is currently developed with two single-family dwellings and two sheds, all of which are proposed to remain during this proposal. The subject site is Zoned Agricultural Holding Zone, or A10, and surrounding uses include single-family residential to the north, west, and south, all zoned either A10, residential five, or seven, so RD5 or RD7. While there are single-family uses in all these directions, the closest single-family dwelling is about 245 feet north of the proposed site. To the east and west of the subject site are also vacant land. The subject site has had one previous planning entitlement. On February 2, 1984, the zoning administrator approved a use permit and a variance to reduce the required lot size of 10 acres to 2.5 acres and a residential accessory structure. Staff also reviewed recent code enforcement violations and has concluded that there are no active cases for this site. The entitlements being requested for this project are a conditional use permit to allow new wireless communication facility in the A10 zoning district, a special development permit to allow the proposed project to deviate from maximum height standards, as well as separation from Group 1 zone property standards, as well as a design review to determine substantial compliance with county-wide design guidelines. On screen now are the proposed site plans for this project. The lease area is proposed to be 1,050 square foot and would also be located in the northeast corner of the parcel. The site would be secured by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence with slats, and that is shown in the imagery on the top right-hand side with the dotted squares there. Along with the wireless communication facility, a concrete pad is being proposed to accommodate a 30-kilowatt diesel generator, as well as a manufacturer shelter. Manufacturer shelter is also proposed to house equipment. Access would be taken from an existing gravel driveway on the west side of the lot through Sunnyside Way. As mentioned before, one of the requests and deviations is separation from Group 1 zone properties. In this case, Group 1 zone properties neighbor the site in all directions. From the site plan, the proposal is meeting the separation requirements to the west and south, keeping a greater distance than the minimum distance listed in the zoning code of 255 feet. That distance is three times the height of the proposed tower. However, to the north and east, the separation standards were not able to be met given lot size limitations. And for those who can't see, on the western side here, there are 270 feet of separation proposed. On the south side down here, there are 272 feet of separation proposed. To the north is 25 feet of separation, and then to the east, it would be 50 feet of Here we have the planting plans for the site. The applicant is proposing landscaping along the north and east sides of the lease area, where the project is deviating from separation standards. This will serve as additional screening for the sites not meeting the separation requirements. On screen now are photo simulations taken from different viewpoints to the site. The wireless communication facility is proposed to be 85 feet in height and would contain a mono-eucalyptus stealth design. The top image will show existing conditions without the proposed wireless communication facility, and the bottom images will show what the area would look like with the proposed wireless communication facility at the proposed height. On screen now, we have a photo simulation looking east at the project site, which provides an unobstructed view from Sunnyside Way, which is the project's frontage. The next few slides are photo simulations taken from the neighboring residential neighborhood to the south. The photo, this photo simulation is looking north at the project site from Cord Way, which is directly south of the project site. This is a view looking northwest at the project site, and this was taken at the intersection of Vintage Park Drive and Willie's Court, also south of the project site. And then we also have a view looking further northwest to the site, and this is at the end of Ben's Court. There are two additional photo simulations from Carlisle Avenue looking south on the site, which are included as Attachment 7 in your hearing packets. The applicant also provided three coverage maps, one of which is on the screen now. This first coverage map shows the existing service in the project area with no tower. Areas in green show reliable coverage both indoors and outdoors. Areas in yellow show reliable coverage in transit, meaning reliable coverage for those driving through the area. And areas in blue indicate reliable service only when outdoors or indicate less reliable indoor coverage. The applicant's goal would be to reduce the area, the areas in blue, as much as possible. Here we have the other two coverage maps provided. To the left is a coverage map that shows the proposed coverage if a tower were placed on-site at the maximum allowed height by the zoning code of 55 feet. As you can see, the area immediately surrounding the project site would change to the green coverage zone. However, there would still be substantial amount of area nearby at the blue, or what would be considered less reliable indoor coverage zone. The third coverage map on the right demonstrates the proposed coverage at the requested height of 85 feet. As you can see, the areas in green coverage would increase and areas in blue coverage would substantially decrease. These maps were provided by the applicant as a justification for the request to ask for deviation from maximum height standards. Additionally, the applicant also provided an alternative site analysis. This is included as Attachment 9 of your hearing packets. As a brief overview of that analysis, it did conclude that a total of 16 sites, including the site proposed today, were selected as candidate locations for either co-location or new tower locations. Of the 16 sites, one site was considered for co-location, but ultimately, it was determined that the existing tower on-site was at capacity, and the location's lease area was not large enough to house new equipment. The remaining 14 sites selected as candidates for new towers, new tower sites, were not selected because the property owners either expressed they were not interested in leasing their land or simply provided no response to the applicant's proposition. An initial study mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for this project and was released for public review on September 6, 2024. The document discussed the topics that are listed on the slide here and concluded that the project would resort in less than, in less than significant impact with implementation of mitigation measures. I do want to note that the county did receive one comment letter from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. The agency did not comment on the accuracy of the MND, but instead focused on potential need for permits. As the comments are not related to the environmental document's adequacy, the county has noted but not provided response to those comments. The proposed project was reviewed by the DRAC, or Design Review Advisory Council, on June 27, 2024. DRAC members stated that they felt the proposed project did a good job of showing coverage needs through the coverage maps that were provided and felt that the stealth design provided was suitable for the area. Therefore, the DRAC recommended the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. The Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council, or CPAC, met on August 8, 2024. A quorum, however, was not able to be established, and therefore, no formal recommendation was made to the planning commission. We will note that there were a total of four public comments at the meeting and two written comments that were received in advance of the meeting, all of which were in opposition to the project. The CPAC members present shared a general sentiment in opposition to the tower based on the community's concerns related to aesthetics, health risks, and property values. In response to the comments regarding the property, reduction of property values near wireless communication facilities, the applicant team did provide an article on this matter, which was included as Attachment 11 of your hearing packets. Following staff's review, it was determined that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, the floor and vineyard community plan, and the zoning code. The environmental document concluded that there would be no significant environmental concerns and that the project was supported by DRAC. Therefore, Planning Environmental Review staff recommends the planning commission take the following actions. Determine the environmental analysis prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete. Adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approve the conditional use permit and special development permit subject to findings and conditions. Find the product in substantial compliance with design guidelines subject to findings and conditions. That concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions, and we also have the applicant team present in person as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balthazar. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Conklin?
Thank you for the presentation. With this height being proposed, is there a new facility or equipment that is being collated on the monopole?
Oh, so with this proposed height, there would be options for new co-location tenants. At this time, I do believe only the one, the one carrier is being proposed for the site, but there is option for new tenants, yeah.
So they're, they're not seeking new heights because they have co-locating needs, they're just giving themselves the option?
That's correct. It's a new tower with options for co-location, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for staff at this time?
The property to the north. Oh, thank you. The property to the north. Let me pull that up. Yeah, so that is currently being graded for residential. I guess it would be like one, not the immediate north, but cross, yes, split that. Laca Circle, Tulie Court. I'm looking at it in Google Maps, sorry, but it's graded. My question is, the immediate surrounding properties, I guess, to the immediate north and left and to the right, east and west, what is our, I guess, normal or ideal distance between these towers and residential development?
Yeah, so the areas to the north are zoned A10, which in our, it's an interim holding code that refers, entitled for refers to the AR10 zoning, which groups that as a Group 1 zoning. So what that would mean is that for wireless communication facilities, three times the height of the tower is what would be the recommended separation requirement. I will note that staff did look into that requirement, which was a zoning ordinance amendment that was approved by the Board September 4, 1991, that three times the height of the tower setback standard was based on staff's perception of the threshold of public acceptance of visual components, so was aesthetic and not more, not so a standard that was based on cellular system technical requirements or any kind of health assessment or anything like that.
And in pursuant to, I believe, is the FCC, there you have the ability of adding 20 feet onto this tower should be approved?
That's correct. So through the FCC, wireless communication facilities can add an additional 10% of height up to 20 feet without the need to come back for a use permit amendment.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
Just a quick question. I know that they didn't have a quorum, but did any of the other CPAC members provide any guidance, feedback, or comments?
Yeah, so the general sentiment from the CPAC members was that of opposition to the project itself. They sided with the members in attendance that had concerns with property values, health risks, and aesthetics.
Thank you.
Were any of the ones at the CPAC the immediate neighbors, either to the north or east?
I don't recall them being directly to the north or east. The majority of the comments did come from that sub, or from the higher-density residential directly to the south here. I do believe there was one public comment from a property owner that owned property directly south of one of these lots here, and they did mention that they had concerns about potential decrease in value and health risks.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just one question. If this tower were to become co-located in the future, would it come back to us for review, or would it just be automatically something that the applicant can do?
I do believe that if there is additional co-location, since they're not increasing the height of the tower or moving the tower anywhere, that is something that would be allowed by right, unless there would be a need to expand the lease area... Unless there would be a need to expand the lease area for additional equipment on the ground level, then an amendment would be needed at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up to address the commission. And our clerk will get you sworn in this evening.
Good evening, Chair.
Hello there. If you could please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the comments that you're about to make are true, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, and you are about to state your name for the record and then make the statement I have been sworn.
My name is Jared Kersley, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today before you. Staff did an excellent job presenting the project before you today. I could answer any questions or concerns at this time. If there's questions on how we rose, got to this location, why the height, why the area, there's a lot of unknowns when it comes to wireless facilities locations. But we did attempt to locate on an existing tower on Vintage Park Drive and Elk Grove Floor and Road. That tower, as staff stated, was over capacity. It failed by 200% on the structural analysis. There is no additional space for a second tower, which that's not normally the desire anyhow. So we first searched in the commercial area, as that is preferred. However, no property owners were open to the idea. But more importantly, it would infer, it would, there was just no space in the parking lots. And it was, it would be a lot closer to single-family dwellings up in that corridor compared to where it is at now. So we gravitated towards the rural area of Sacramento County and found agricultural land or A10 agricultural lands. And we chose the location that was the furthest north away from the suburban area, the homes to the south. That is where the four opposing members wrote and made their statements at the CPAC hearing. That's where they were located. As we see on the coverage maps, AT&amp;T does have a significant gap in coverage in this area. The 45-foot antenna height would not completely solve that gap in coverage. So that is the reason why we are requesting additional height to get expanded coverage to all the dwellings that are currently existing and going to be existing in the near future after development is complete over there. We chose to, we originally proposed a mono pine design. It was the planning staff and DRAC that requested a mono eucalyptus tree, which it will blend in better with the surrounding eucalyptus trees. It is more of a calac of faux trees, if you will. When you're comparing different tree types, it's going to blend in better and fit better. So we believe we chose the least intrusive design while filling the gap in coverage for AT&amp;T. The tower does allow for future co-occaters. If Verizon or T-Mobile have a desire to go on the tower, that will be open to them. That would be less viable if the tower was only 45 feet tall. Or I'm sorry, if it's 55 feet tall with our antennas at 45 feet. That means that the other carriers' antennas would be required at 35 feet and 25 feet, which is not tall enough to provide the coverage that's needed. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from staff. And if there's any other public comments after my presentation, I'd be happy to come back up and comment again.
I'll kick us off this evening. You said originally you looked at another tower to co-locate on and you didn't want to put a second tower next to it. But why not replace that initial tower? With a, and you just, you know, put the existing equipment on the new tower that is structurally sufficient for it?
Yeah, that was, that was what we were considering as well. We were first considering an extension and then a replacement. Unfortunately, the foundation would fail as well with the additional height and antenna equipment. So it wasn't something that we could just swap, swap in and out for.
Did you look at replacing the foundation?
No.
Because you're going to put in a new foundation here, right?
Correct. We aren't the owners of the tower, so it's not something that we could just propose. The owner of the tower would have to agree to that. And digging up a foundation that could be 30 feet deep of a pure foundation is just not a viable process.
Sounds good. Next question. Can you talk a little bit about the alternative at the park site that's a little to the south of this? There are a lot more trees down there. I saw it in the alternative analysis, but you know, the alternative analysis is, hey, we walked the site and we didn't see anything there. Can you give us a little more detail on why there's not a sufficient location there?
It just wasn't, you know, it didn't really see an option to place an 85-foot tall structure there. It is surrounded by homes. Honestly, I, we felt it would be a lot more visually intrusive to the surrounding homes than in the rural portion of the county.
What about a 55-foot tall structure there?
The 55-foot tall wasn't going to solve this to get sitting big gap in coverage for AT&amp;T.
Is there a chance of putting two towers that are 55 feet that would comply? I know, I noticed a number of the sites that said, you know, well, the problem was it was too close to the ones to the northwest, said, oh, they're too close to the other AT&amp;T tower. But, you know, I guess this is, you can solve the problem multiple different ways, right? So 85 feet is a big ask. That's where I'm, I'm kind of going to push on you a little bit here of why the 85 feet.
Yeah, it's usually counties, jurisdictionals. Preference is to have one tower to serve the whole community instead of multiple towers to serve a community. So that's the reason for two towers. It's, it's really wasn't considered to place two towers in one location. Because what happens when you, when you have two towers that are essentially quarter mile away from each other, it's going to create a lot more coverage issues and overlapping coverage. And that's just, that's, it's going to cause network interference, more or less. Network issues, I would say. And instead of placing one tower centralized, that will solve the problem, the coverage problem. And there's also a capacity problem, which means too many users using the adjacent wireless facilities, and it bogs the system down, and that's the need for an additional tower.
Other questions for the applicant this evening? Commissioner Devon?
Yeah. You pursuant to the FCC, you would have the ability to increase the height in this tower. Would it be your intention to do so?
No, it's not the original carrier's intention to do so. They will build the asset. We always try to build it for our minimum need, minimal needs and additional space below the tower to make it a viable site for other carriers if they want to co-locate on it. So it's not usually the first carrier that will propose the increase. It's additional carriers down the road. I don't see that, our need for this particular tower, though.
So your intent is to build an 85-foot tower, which would be sufficiently high for the co-location?
Potentially, yes. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant this evening? Commissioner Conklin?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around the proposed coverage. And we've got a couple maps here that show through color metrics here either kind of less reliable or more reliable coverage with the proposed monopole. And I guess, you know, as the last few years, we've been told that we're trying to bridge the digital divide. And what I'm seeing here is a request to deviate from existing separation standards, height standards, ceding away our authority really for just bolstering or being able to have a more robust coverage. Not, and so I'm trying to better understand here this. I don't see a map that shows no coverage at all that we're trying to cover, that we're trying to provide service to. And so I'm, maybe you can better explain or help me, help enlighten me as to how we're, how we're getting to these, these, this kind of visual metric here, this color display that shows this kind of proposed coverage. How are we getting to that forecast? And, and why are we? I guess, you know, my colleague's inquiry was, why aren't we just, you know, working with existing infrastructure instead of building new and just bolstering what appears to be existing coverage?
So the map on the screen now is the coverage map that exists today for AT&amp;T. The blue area would indicate a lack of service that they are trying to solve. That's the gap in coverage that they are trying to solve.
But it says, now you go back, it says reliable coverage outdoor only, less reliable for indoor. So that to me says there's coverage.
There is coverage outdoor. The carrier will, if they could demonstrate, and these maps will demonstrate, will determine if they have a significant gap in coverage. And by placing a tower in this area, it will solve that significant gap in coverage. I don't have the FCC's definition of significant gap in coverage before me today. But that is something that I would like to have researched because the FCC is, is what places the guidelines for carriers and what, how they define a gap in coverage. And in our case here, they have demonstrated that they do have a gap in coverage.
And if we can go back to the, I think it's the, or the next slide. So the one I'm looking at out of my packet, it says proposed LTE 700 coverage. And in parentheses at the top margin, it says RC presumably for reliable coverage equals 46 feet. And I'm wondering where that, what that, if you could maybe interpret that for me?
46 feet is where the antenna's center line would be located at?
Okay.
Yeah, and the top of the structure is 55 feet because we have to count for the top of the pole and then the foliage on top of the pole to make it look like a tree.
Got it.
I feel like, just to follow up to that, and maybe this is for staff. The 55 feet, isn't there a plus five for foliage or something? Or is 55 the maximum?
So 55 feet is the maximum. We'll note that the height of our communication facilities is always taken from the top of the antennas rather than the top of branch or lightning rod in some cases. So we're always measuring to the top of antennas.
Got it. So a 55-foot, in this case, you guys are mounting the equipment nine feet below that. But in your other one, you're mounting it four feet below the 85-foot tree?
Yeah, the center line would be 81, and the top of the antenna would be 85. It's an eight-foot antenna.
That doesn't, that doesn't really match up.
I'm sorry.
In your coverage maps.
So, see here.
Yeah, in your 55-foot tower, you're showing a coverage map of 40, at 46 feet center line, which is nine feet difference, which matches your eight-foot antenna. But in your other coverage map, you're showing 81. It may just be a typo, but.
It might be a typo, but yeah, the coverage, the coverage isn't going to change based off of four feet much or five feet much. The difference between the 55 and 85-foot, you know, the 55-foot shows a lot more blue and more yellow than the 85-foot, which has a lot more green and less area with the, with the yellow and blue. It's solving their coverage gap, a coverage gap to their satisfaction of what would solve their problem with the coverage.
Just looking at this coverage map for a second, I got to assume if I've got blue on the edges here of 55 feet, if I were to zoom out on that 85-foot map, am I going to see blue on the eastern and western and southwest side?
I can't say it's, without seeing the map. I do know there's the sites up north to the northeast and northwest. That's why you see the green. And then there looks like there's a site down to the southeast that the green's floating to the north.
Got it. Yeah, that doesn't really change between the two on the southeast, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant team this evening? Commissioner Devon?
Yeah, thank you. The, the property owner for the location, do they control that entire, I guess, what maybe looks to be like a 10-acre tract?
Yeah, they control the whole.
Can you go to the colored?
No.
Yeah, I can't. There we go. There we go. So in the middle there, at the bottom, is that red square? Kind of generically, there's a large green undeveloped square to the right and a large kind of mostly undeveloped square to the left. Is that one parcel?
So to the east, there's two parcels. There's, it's split north and south. And then to the west, there's, looks like two parcels running horizontally. And then, and then there's a one, two, three, four, four parcels on that north section.
So this landowner only controls that, what is contained within that red square?
Correct.
Okay, there may be a question for staff. Did we do any outreach to any, any of those property, adjacent property owners? It's probably outside the 600 feet, but there's only like, you know, a handful of them.
So we did, we did notice for this hearing and also for the CPAC, community members within 500 feet of the site. That did include the parcels that were mentioned just now, the parcels to the east and to the west. As mentioned primarily, we heard back from comments from people residing to the south. But they were noticed for both this hearing and for the CPAC meeting as well.
And do we have any development applications in for any of those vacant parcels?
For the parcels to the east and west, I did not see any active entitlements being requested at this time.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, I'm now going to move on to public comment. I don't see that I have any public comment cards. Yeah, none? Anyone in the room here to comment on the proposed wireless facility? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to deliberation. Commissioner Cerviagnano?
Yeah, I was going to ask our county council for some guidance here. I think we've had a couple of these come in the past, and there's a little bit of limitations that we have. If you can, maybe you can remind us of those.
Sure. Well, you, in terms of what you're deciding, what you're really looking for is whether the applicant has proposed a site that is the quote-unquote least intrusive in terms of the values that our zoning code is trying to protect. Usually that means aesthetic. So what you're looking for is to see if the applicant has performed a
So what you're looking for is to see if the applicant has performed a meaningful analysis of alternative sites, and they have provided an alternative site packet, I guess I'll call it. So maybe you've seen that, and you can decide whether or not you feel that's a meaningful evaluation of possible sites. On the coverage, whether or not there's a significant gap, that's my understanding of the most recent FCC regulation, or really it's not a reg, it's an order, is that we really can't use that as a grounds to deny. And also, the applicant can, to the extent they need to, show a gap in coverage, the adequacy of the indoor coverage is part of that consideration. And that's what they're telling you. That's, that's about it. Oh, you can't deny based on any concerns about EMF or radio frequency radiation as long as the facility meets the federal standard, which I'm going to assume this one does. I've never seen one that doesn't come before the planning commission before.
Or would you like to leave it to me to take a stab at?
Make a couple comments. I, I struggle with the, I guess, decision to not invest in existing structure for aesthetic reasons and propose a new site that will cause a new visual impairment for those residents where an existing antenna provides coverage and could be easily replaced with a larger or taller antenna. And so for those reasons, I just, I wanted to share some concerns with this particular application or proposed project.
I guess I have some of those same concerns. Seems to be a bit of an intrusion now, and with a little bit of squinting into the future, seems to be a bit larger intrusion as potentially more homes are built around it. And it's almost like we're planning for that intrusion to occur by, with this one. The height of 85 feet also, you know, continues to be a concern related to all of these, especially with the ability to add 20 feet on top of that. So it's 105 feet.
Yeah, I, you guys know where I stand on large fake trees. I think I've made my position clear over the years of sitting up here. Just because we make something look like a tree does not make it visually appealing. And in some cases, I think it makes it look worse. I don't think this is our least intrusive option. I looked at the alternative, I look at the alternative site analysis and see comments like we're interfering too close to the northwest, but then I still see some blue that's there in there, and I worry that we're not seeing the full picture when we zoom out that this tower isn't meeting further gaps in coverage to the east and the south, even when we are adding on this extra height. I also, you know, I look at park sites where we have trees that may be in the 55-foot range as a potential screening mechanism. I've seen a number of these in park sites that seem to work with a fake tree because you do have the screening of other trees around, whereas this one won't be there. And then I do think that our setback on the towers is there for a reason. And although the, you know, northern property owner isn't here tonight, I look at where it's being placed on the property that's going to make money off of leasing this space, and we've jammed it in the northeast corner. So it's very close to the neighbor, whereas if we respected the standards, we'd put it smack dab in the middle of the property and let that generator run where the applicant, you know, for the person who's at least making the lease money off of it. So I don't think we're being least intrusive to those neighbors, particularly to the north and potential neighbors to the east. And the height is just my big concern. So I, I think we need to go back and, or we need to ask them to go back and provide Or an alternative analysis. Any other comment? Commissioner Cervino?
Yeah, I mean, I would be open. I'm curious to see what the rest of the area looks like here, as the chair was just talking about. I do think though, that to me, it does seem like the applicant tried, they went to 14 other, was it 14 other, 15, and didn't get the, you know, response from them that they were interested in this. I do think that this site is better to me than the middle of the park, which is closer to the homes, closer to, to, you know, where kids play. And I think that we're never going to find a perfect site, or not we, but the applicant will never find a perfect site because these towers are needed where people live, right? That's where the demand is. And so I'm not sure that there's ever going to be a site that isn't intrusive to the view to just next to homes and things like that. So, but I would be curious to see the additional map and coverage that you talked about.
Yeah, and I think I would be, just to be clear, I think I would be more, if somebody said, oh, I need an extra 10 feet, I know we've seen those come in, right? Well, we start talking an extra 30 feet and then jamming it in the corner of the site 25 feet away. It's, it's a pretty extreme as far as what we've seen here over the years, right? It's a pretty big ask. Any further discussion or deliberation before I make a motion? Or would somebody else like to make a motion?
I'd like to just add a couple things to Raythel. Definitely hear all of your concerns and, you know, this is the last two, three years, this hearing body has probably heard maybe half a dozen of these. You're right, but I think, you know, to play a little bit of the devil's advocate, in many of those instances, we have the firefighters, the first responders, as well as their respective unions and organized trades that have supported using these types of projects. And in some cases, even in areas closer to Rancho Cordova, they've been able to put some artistic twist to the tower. I've read in other communities, they're creating fake water, like water towers to kind of hide the purpose. And so I'm kind of leaning towards member Sabaniano in a sense that for every aesthetic argument, that there could potentially be a 911 call that might be improved by this. And then, and I come from this community and neighborhood, and we've fortunately had very many of those during the Fourth of July because everybody had illegal fireworks. And so trying to balance the pros and the cons between, you know, one, we can't question the health concerns because as long as they're within the certain levels, the Federal Trade Commission basically said you have to approve it. Second, there's been case precedents, not that I'm stopping that because I'm not a big fan of, you know, case law, just stopping a decision-making body from, from looking at the benefits. But I think here, while it might not be perfect, I think there's reason to believe, at least from my humble opinion, that there could potentially be more benefits that might outweigh the good, outweigh the bad. And so right now, I definitely hear you. There's, you just go up north on Algroflor Boulevard, there's a couple of those, and they seem to tend to go in agricultural communities. But as more growth in the north vineyard station is happening, as we're planning for hopefully more smarter infill in some of these areas, then we need to be able to provide utility services, or else it wouldn't be good for newcomers to these neighborhoods to start living. And then maybe they'll go spread somewhere else. So anyways, right now, I'm leaning towards just supporting the project.
Yeah, and I guess just to be clear, I'm not arguing for a gap in coverage. I'm arguing for, you know, going back and analyzing whether we can meet the coverage required, or whether the applicant can meet the coverage requirements in a less intrusive way. That's really what, what I would like to see. And it's like, is the analysis robust or are there other solutions here? Because I think, looking at that map, to me, there's likely another solution that has less height to it. But still achieves the same coverage. I don't want to not have a 911 call go through. That's not what I'm arguing. I'm arguing, let's, let's go back and do it while trying to respect this 55-foot that we've established. Or let's, let's let the board raise the height limit. Either way, but I'm frustrated by the constant challenge of our height limit on the tower side of things.
No, I was going to ask, I know sometimes these are on a time limit. Could we, I don't want to be the one to propose delay, but is that on the table or not?
Good point. I don't know where we are on the shot clock with this project.
Yeah, so we have, well, I have staff, we have until December on the shot clock, which is not very far away. I would be interested in hearing whether the applicant has any thoughts on the potential additional analysis that you're talking about. I would also add that the property where this is located and the surrounding properties are all designated for ag rez uses in the Floren Vineyard Community Plan. So unless something substantially changes in that community plan, I would not anticipate much more intense development, at least north of, I guess, north of Carlisle or the existing low-density residential to the south.
Thank you for that. That helps. I'll invite the applicant back up this evening. And while he's making his way down, have we ever looked at planting actual eucalyptus trees around a fake eucalyptus? So it looks like a eucalyptus grove? Then we wouldn't have to pump in the fake smell of the eucalyptus? No? Okay. Just an idea.
Eucalyptus grove, right there to your left, or right, sorry. My name again is Jared Kersley. On behalf of AT&amp;T, you know, in terms of design being least impactful, I mean, we're open to ideas, you know, but throwing a water, a faux water tank here, I'm not convinced that that would be less intrusive than a tree. They typically take up more airspace in, at the very top because you're concealing the antennas and they have to have separation be so instead of a, you know, 15-foot wide diameter tree, you have a 20-foot wide diameter tank or 22 feet, what have you. So we, we are, we, we know this is the least intrusive location that is viable. The park is not less, it's going to be more visually impactful. There is more surrounding homes, and as Commissioner pointed out, there is, that's where children play and people visit. So this rural area is, is the least impactful location, and it was not viable to use the other infrastructure that's existing to the east. You know, this area is growing as we see on the map. There's new development to the north, there's development surrounding the whole property. And it is a utility. Everyone in this room has a cell phone. I've been looking at everyone, right? And they're all using their cell phone. Commissioner over there is Googling stuff as we speak, right? And that's what we, that's what we do. I was watching the football game earlier before it started, this hearing started. But how many devices do people have? They have cell phones, they have iPads, they have watches, they have all these smart devices that connect to these wireless facilities. And as development grows, people, people need, they are, they are the reason why carriers need to build more towers because there's a lot more usage and it increases the demand, which is going to increase the supply. So that, that's where this is coming from, is the demand. And as we see tonight, there's zero opposition, vocal opposition on this project. I think there's two letters written in on record. The folks who visited this, me on the CPAC, I don't know if they have a change of heart or, or they couldn't make it, I'm not sure. So I just want to remind that of staff, a commissioner, and that's, that's what we believe. Now, are we against proposing another design? Absolutely not. We could do a regular bear poll if you like. It's going to be a lot cheaper, but that's not, that's not going to be less intrusive in our opinion. So, but yes, we are open to working with, with commissioners. We're open to tolling the clock more if that is needed. Any other questions for me? This, this is, have FirstNet technology, which is E911 dedicated service for first responders. It does have that technology, it's Band 14, and it will be available. Again, it is not, it will not be AT&amp;T's intent to increase this tower by another 20 feet as the current level of antenna proposed will, is the minimum that they need to solve their coverage gap.
Any idea what the height of those eucalyptus trees are out there? They look like they're planted in a nice row right along, right along the property line.
Eighty, eighty-six and 99 feet, according to our survey.
And those are the ones on the northwest corner of the property?
Yes, correct.
Can we flip over to some of the visualizations? Yeah, those are a long way from that tree. Yeah, I don't see them in any of the others because they should be there to the west there, but maybe that house is covering them.
Yeah, it's covered by the house, yeah. And that one's covered by the tree.
Yeah, that's looking down the property line to the east.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, what about a lower height? Well, what about a lower height? You guys willing to consider a lower height tower?
My pages were shuffling, what was the question?
Would you be, would you be open to a lower tower?
How low are we talking?
Well, we'll start at 55 feet, but we can go from there. You're at 85, we're at 55.
Fifty-five, fifty-five did not solve their coverage gaps, and it would more or less prevent future collocators.
Okay, but if I can tag on, if there's no intent to raise it an extra 20 feet, even at 65 feet, you would effectively be reaching your coverage territory, or at least the intent of the coverage territory, without towering over those trees, or the neighboring communities, or the development nearby. So I mean, I think there's a, I think there's a room here for some reasonable standard, I mean, we have height restrictions for a reason, we have separation standards for a reason, and if, if 85 to 100 is not needed, and there's no intention to go that high, then if you go at 65, you can always, always use the FCC to go higher with, by right, and you're almost at your 85. So, why not?
Sounds like an idea to me.
So you'd be comfortable if we modified it to a 65-foot tower?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that makes me a lot more comfortable. We've approved a number of 65-foot towers, it's the 85 that's given me a lot of concern.
Okay. Do you like me to make a motion, Chair, or do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, if the applicant's with minimal to that change, counsel?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Actually, lost my train of thought. Can somebody else make that motion? I know it's 65 to 85, from 85 to 65.
Staff, any other considerations that we need to think of before we make a motion on a 65-foot tower?
Nothing else. I would just note that we would obviously make whatever changes as, when we hear the motion, into the appropriate attachments to the staff report, which would include the use permit, the special development permit, et cetera.
You might want to get some clarity on, if it's going to be a 65-foot tower, are they gonna use that 65-foot tower for anything? Or do they need to do the ministerial extra 20 feet to put up what they need to put up?
Yeah, I think that would...
Fair enough.
I mean, that's for you to ask, if you feel like you need to ask it, but that's...
And for clarification, I didn't hear tonight that there was, this wasn't contingent on new facility equipment for co-locating, so this wasn't, there's no intention at the, at least the immediate future for any co-location?
From another carrier you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
No, not, we don't know anything right now, until towers get built, and that's when carriers start inquiring.
And that's when the ministerial 20 feet can be used is only for co-location, correct?
That's what the REG referred, well, yes, for co-location, the REG does, I don't think it talks about who's requesting the co-location. So I'm just wondering if, if you are assuming that they can use a 65-foot tower for their purposes today, I'm wondering if they are assuming they're automatically going to do a 20-foot addition, so it's just gonna be 85 feet no matter what.
Got it. So are you saying you're comfortable building a 65-foot tower today and expanding it to 85 feet if you co-loc, if you have a co-locator in the future?
That would be up to the co-locator carrier, right? Maybe they don't need to, maybe they don't want to spend the money to increase the tower. So if we get a 65-foot tower approved today, then I could advise AT&amp;T to install it 65 feet.
Okay. So we're gonna be building a 65-foot tower, and then if there's a request in the future for co-location, it could end up being modified to 85 feet, which is...
Can I, sorry. Can I make a clarification?
Sure.
This is Kimber Gutierrez, Senior Planner. I believe it's, they can increase 10% up to 20 feet. So I don't think they automatically just get the 20 feet, I think it's 10%, and if that 10% is 20 feet, then they can do it. So I don't think they just get 20 feet ministerially.
It's 10% of the tower height, or 20 feet, whichever is greater, is how we read it, interpret it.
That's how I remember it also.
That's how I remember it.
I think so too.
Otherwise, it'd be an increase of, you know, six and a half feet.
Yeah.
Usually carriers increase it minimally, usually one center line of antennas, that's what typical, typically is done.
Which is 10 feet?
Usually 10-ish feet, yeah.
10-ish feet, yeah.
But they are, they are allowed 20.
We're good. Commissioner Borja, you ready with a motion?
Actually, just one more quick question. Would there be any other changes needed for the separation from Group One Zone Properties, which is the second bullet of the request? Or are we just able to make the first bullet? You know, the max, as proposed, the WCF would be 65 feet. Are there, I guess, what I'm trying to ask, is there any other changes needed on the separation to the north or east?
We would need to just adjust the numbering, because the three times the height of the tower obviously will change, because the tower's lower, but we'll just make that modification in the actual special development permit itself.
Understood. And I'm ready to support staff's recommendation and understanding that we are approving 65 feet instead of 85, and to request staff's adjustments on the modification that we had just talked about.
Any further clarification needed on that?
Clarification on the top, the 65 feet, that is the top of the steel structure, is that correct? Not the foliage?
Correct.
Okay. So then we would have a 61-foot center line on an eight-foot antenna, four feet, four feet lower than 65.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then foliage?
It's usually five feet tall.
Five feet above?
Yeah.
Understood. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
We have a motion, a second, any further deliberation? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Borja?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Cronus Abagnano?
Yes.
Devlin?
Aye.
And Raythal?
Yes.
And motion carries as amended.
Thank you for being willing to work with us.
Thank you for working with us, appreciate it.
Please call item number three.
Item number three this evening is PLNP 2018-00284. It's for General Plan Amendment, Upper West Side Specific Plan, Urban Services Plan, Public Facilities Financing Plan, Affordable Housing Strategy, Water Supply Master Plan, Water Supply Assessment and Development Agreement. It's located on approximately 2,066 acres in the Natomas community, and the environmental document is an environmental impact report.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Emma Patton, Senior Planner and Project Manager for the Upper West Side Specific Plan. Today, I'm gonna provide a basic overview and some background information on the specific plan, before we get to the purpose of today's hearing, which is to receive oral comments on the draft environmental impact report. The plan area shown here in red encompasses 2,066 acres, and is generally bounded by Fisherman's Lake Parkway to the north, Interstate 80 to the southwest, the West Drainage Canal to the east, and Garden Highway with the Sacramento River beyond to the west. Today, the land is predominantly agricultural and rural residences, with commercial uses located near the intersection of El Centro Road and West El Camino. Here you can see details about the community context. The plan area borders the city of Sacramento, along its southern, eastern, and northern boundaries. To the west is property within the unincorporated county, located within the Garden Highway Special Planning Area, again with the Sacramento River beyond, and land within the unincorporated county is to the north, primary use for agriculture. This project has a lengthy history. Before the Upper West Side Specific Plan was, application was formally submitted, it was previously known as the Natomas Joint Vision Plan. The Natomas Joint Vision was meant to coordinate urbanizing development proposed within the Natomas community. Ultimately, the Natomas Joint Vision project was withdrawn, and individual landowners moved forward with their own projects independently, the Upper West Side Specific Plan being one of those. Following the submittal of the formal Upper West Side Specific Plan application, the Board initiated the specific plan effort in February 2019. This gave staff the direction to begin working with the applicant team to process their entitlement requests. Since then, the applicant has prepared the draft specific plan, several supporting documents, and technical studies, and staff, in coordination with our consultant, has prepared the draft environmental impact report. That document was released for public review on August 30, 2024. So if adopted, the specific plan, along with the other supporting entitlements, would establish a framework and policies for development within the plan area. Including in those plans would be infrastructure plans, there would be public service plans, plans for the financing of and delivery of those services. The land use designations for each of the parcels would be identified. The build-out, I should say, at build-out, the project would allow for 9,356 residential dwelling units, about 3 million square feet of commercial uses, 306 acres of parks and open space, a 542-acre agricultural buffer, three elementary schools, a high school, and a community college campus. To accomplish all of this, the applicant is requesting a series of entitlements, one being a general plan amendment to extend the urban services boundary, another to extend the urban policy area. There's also general plan amendments being proposed to the text, the land use diagram, the transportation diagram, and active transportation plan. In addition, the applicant is requesting an affordable housing strategy, a development agreement, a public facilities financing plan, a urban services plan, adoption of a water supply master plan, and a water supply assessment. So to assess the project and all of these planning entitlements, we prepared a draft environmental impact report, or DEIR. The report assessed the project for potential impacts to a variety of resource areas, and found that the project would result in significant and unavoidable impacts to some aspects of aesthetics, agriculture, air quality, cultural, noise, population and housing, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. Impacts in the other categories were found to be less than significant, or less than significant with mitigation. As previously mentioned, the DEIR was published on August 30, 2024, initiating the 45-day public review period. Since its release, the county has provided opportunities to provide written comments via email and oral comments during the October 3, 2024 CPAC meeting. The public will be invited to provide additional public comments on the DEIR this evening. The 45-day review period officially ended on October 14, 2024. However, we wanted to ensure that the public had the opportunity to provide public comments on the DEIR during the Planning Commission meeting, so staff had originally intended to extend the public review period to today, October 21. Since then, we have received several requests to extend the public review period to October 28. So therefore, this evening, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission acknowledge that October 28 will be the end of the public comment period for the draft EIR, and direct staff to prepare the final environmental impact report following the close of the public review period. So that is the business for this evening. I do want to highlight some of our next steps before I close. Staff is working to schedule a CPAC meeting, likely in December, where staff will ask the CPAC to provide a recommendation to either approve or deny the project. Staff will also begin preparation of the final environmental impact report at the direction of the Planning Commission in response to both the written and oral comments related to the DEIR. Once that final environmental impact report is published, and the project materials are finalized, staff will return to the Planning Commission for another public hearing to provide a more in-depth presentation on the project itself, and receive the Planning Commission's recommendation for either approval or denial. From there, staff will bring the project to the Board of Supervisors, who is the final decision body for this project, and they will be making their final determination. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have. We also have the applicants in attendance this evening, should you have any questions, best suited for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Cronus Abagnano.
Thank you so much for that presentation. So I think you said in the beginning, tonight is just to hear the additional public comments from the public, that they, those that maybe didn't go to the CPAC, or that haven't submitted anything in writing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We're accepting oral public comments today on the DEIR, and in the final environmental impact report, we'll be providing responses to those comments.
Okay, perfect. I don't think I have no other questions right now, but probably later. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you for your report, Ms. Patton. Can you remind me again the relationship of this project with the, and perhaps the key players behind the Natomas Basin Conservancy Plan, and if the county is one of those designees?
I'll direct that question to Todd.
Commissioner Borja, Todd Smith, Planning Director. The county is not a signatory to the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. The city of Sacramento and Sutter County are. The county has the land use authority here in the unincorporated county, in the, at least relative to Natomas, and so we are proceeding with this application as directed by the Board of Supervisors, who initiated it, as Ms. Patton indicated in early 2019.
Understood. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Ms. Patton. And you said the applicant is here this evening, would like to address the commission?
Certainly here this evening.
Got it. The applicant's welcome to address the commission? Yeah? All right. Perfect. And then we're gonna hop right into public comment on the draft EIR this evening. We have, we have quite a few public comments, yes. And I've had one request to be moved up. I've got Luisa Montoya to start us off this evening. And then I'm gonna call, we are gonna give you guys two minutes each, and I'll call the second person, so they can be on deck and ready to go, so we can take these comments in as efficient as way as possible. Bao Soin, I have as on deck, just be ready to speak. You can come down and kind of be right down after the next person. All right, Ms. Montoya, you have the floor.
My name is Luisa, and I am here today with my daughters, and I've been living in Natomas for almost 10 years, and I support the Upper West Side Plan. It would help aid with the housing crisis that we face today. A lot of apartment complexes in Natomas have a long waiting list, and as well as, houses are selling quick to people that are coming from the outside, so I feel like this plan will help bring the people that are already in the community, like, help them out, as well as it will help allow for a lot of our children to continue growing in the community that we all love, with the school, the community college, parks, and just everything incorporated. It is also a good location. I work two, like, two minutes away from there as well, so it's a good, I feel like it's a good plan. I feel like everything that was, that has been integrated into putting, like, bringing the plan together, will help bring more tax revenue as well, with our growing community. And I just, that is all for today. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to your kids for sticking it out this long. We appreciate you guys coming down this evening. Mr. Soin, you're up next, and I've got Melanie Herman on deck. Mr. Soin, you're up next, and I've got Melanie Herman on deck.
Yes, my name is Baal Soin. I think this project will be very beneficial for the community, and how can you go wrong with a new park, a new commercial places, the park, the schools, and, and the housing? Sacramento is short of housing. It will give the housing, the more, the better thing is the government will make money. There's a billion dollars when this project is done. Look at now, it's just a field. There's nothing there. It's not pleasant to see, and when it's done, you'll be surprised to see it'll be one of a kind. It's modern, it's new, and the government will make billions of prop, money will be spent in that place, and the government make more money on that too. So the better it is, there will be a park, there will be a schools, there will be a commercial places, there will be a lot of new jobs will be available in that area, and surrounding community will be beneficial to them. So I really admire the people who put this plan together, and I thank you guys, at least you are considering to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we got Melanie Herman, and then I've got Wayne Herman on deck. Guys are welcome to address the commission together, or you're welcome to each have your own two minutes.
All right.
I'm mainly moral support.
What I'm concerned about is that the Corps of Engineers already determined that the levee, as it was prior to these multi-billion dollars of investment, the levee was too fragile to protect Natomas, okay? I'm in Reach A, we're in Reach A, and the construction is happening right across from us now. One thing that hasn't been considered is the extra traffic. Every Garden Highway resident that I've spoken to about this, we all get rattled by traffic. We're talking SUVs, trucks, and when semis go by, it feels like the road actually distorts in a wave as they move past the house. We rattle, the whole place does, everywhere does, along the Garden Highway. And so my concern is with climate change, deluges coming down in flooding areas, and with the fact that so many trees have come down on the Garden Highway and busted up the crust of clay that once capped it and made the interior of the levee secure and can't be washed out, that cap has been broken many, many times by trees, and trees have come down. So we're very concerned about liquefaction. Our side will, with all that extra vibration from the traffic, our side, I'm just, I'm just fearful for the extra danger that that vibration on a liquid levee will do to our houses. And if you're 100% sure that Reach A is going to protect the entire Natomas Basin, then approve this thing. But I don't think it will. I think it's putting too much pressure on the highway.
Thank you, Hermans.
We're also in agreement with the many other
Yes.
issues that are going to be brought up tonight in, in opposition to the size and scope of this project.
Thank you. Christine Schmackel, you're up next, and Josh Harmatz, you're on deck. And I will apologize for butchering names.
Hi, I'm Christine Schmackel. You did good. And I'm here in, I lived in, I've lived in Natomas in various areas for about 40 years. So I've seen it grow, and I now live closer to the Garden Highway and Orchard Lane, and therefore West El Camino. And so my concern are many that are listed there, but particularly the traffic and the safety and the noise and the impact on the Garden Highway. I look at the Garden Highway, I watch the traffic go by, and it's, it's a, this is a safety issue as well. We've, I've lived in this location for, I think, three years now, and we've had several horrible accidents on that road. So adding more traffic to that location, as already been said, is, is a big risk. I don't know what the statistics are, like how many thousands of cars equals how many lives that have possibly been lost, but it's going to be a huge impact, and I do request that you reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmackel. All right, Mr. Harmatz, you are up, and Ross Oliviera, you're on deck.
Thank you, and you said that perfectly. So I had prepared remarks for tonight and was at a community meeting last Sunday on the 13th with our neighbors on the Garden Highway Community Association. On that evening, during the middle of the meeting, while we're talking about traffic and safety issues, this happened. This is from last Sunday night. This is the fourth time in the last 10 years I've had a house run through the front of my property. What else do you do on Sunday evening at 6 o'clock? My oldest son, his chores are to take the trash out to the street. Fortunately, he was at a friend's house that night and was not on the road when this happened. This happens all the time. The issue for me isn't as much that there is traffic and safety, it's number one, what has the county done about it? We were promised when the levy improvement, I've been there 16 years, when the levy was widened, we were promised they were going to repave and redo Garden Highway and make it a more safer place. Nothing has happened. Now you're talking about adding 25,000 new residents? Look at this photo. I want you to understand what happens with the traffic maps down here. They, people get rerouted on their apps from Waze, from Google Maps, et cetera. When this freeway backs up, and this is before 3 million square feet in Metro Air Park and the other places that are currently being approved have even come into play, this is the most direct route. People cut through Highway 5 and Highway 80 through Garden Highway, traveling at very high speeds. The biggest issue with this is that the current proposal that they've submitted does not provide any planning, any solution for funding, or any solutions on how to execute on the plan. Now, really important here, the traffic study done by the county, if you look at the bottom of page seven, it specifically states Garden Highway needs to meet current county requirements. Current county requirements, as provided by the county, is two 12-foot wide lanes with a six-foot shoulder, correct? Our road is 16 feet in total width at the shortest, and at the widest, 20 feet in total width, with no room. They just finished the levy improvements. They just moved the power poles. I spoke to RD 1000, I spoke to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. The developers did not talk to them about any widening of Garden Highway, which is required by the county. So I urge this commission to delay this approval until these issues can be adequately addressed, planning can be completed with where the funding is going to come from.
Thank you, Mr. Harmatz.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Oliviera, and on deck, I've got Brandon Castillo.
I am here to express my serious concerns regarding the proposed Upper West Side specific plan and its long-term impacts on our community. I've lived on Garden Highway for almost 40 years, grew up there, lived on the land side and the riverside. I ask you to carefully consider the broader implications this project will have on the natural resources, local farmland, and public safety of our county. I specifically want to refer to a key statement from the Sacramento County 2030 General Plan. The land use strategies and policies of the Sacramento County 2030 General Plan are designed to promote the efficient use of land, encourage economic vitality and job growth, reduce urban sprawl and its impacts, preserve habitat and open space, and protect agricultural and range land operations. Two growth boundaries are identified to help implement this vision, the urban services boundary and the urban policy area. The USB is the ultimate growth boundary for the unincorporated area. This area is all outside of that. The UPA defines the area within the USB expected to receive urban services in the near term. Together, the UPA and the USB promote orderly growth and efficient extension of infrastructure and provision of urban services. While I support these principles, I am concerned that the Upper West Side project deviates significantly from this vision. Here are my specific reasons. Reduction of the Sacramento River corridor buffer. The county finally settled on a one-mile buffer. This project is going to reduce that to about 700 feet in some areas and a half a mile in others. But I want to ask this basic question, is there adequate vacancy inside the urban services boundary for a project like this? Has that been analyzed? Second, irreversible loss of open space and farmland. Talk about protecting habitat, now we're getting rid of it. Traffic safety on Garden Highway, which Josh talked about. The DEIR suggested the project could add 4,000 trips per day. I have a feeling it's going to be quite a bit more than that. Violation of existing planning guidelines and significant and unavoidable project impacts. I guess that's it for time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Castillo, and then on deck, I've got Kevin McRae.
I'll be quick. Brandon Castillo, Garden Highway resident. I want to echo what Josh, well, first of all, blowing through the urban services boundary, this is an environmentally sensitive area. It's right along the Sacramento River. For those of us that live there, we know how sensitive it is, not only for recreation but for, for species and habitat. We're blowing through farmland. I happen to think it looks great, you may not, but, but the traffic concerns are significant. Nobody seems to have taken into account, it's, it's become a freeway. Garden Highway has become a freeway. We're now talking about 25,000 residents. I recently lost my dog because cars just fly by and they speed. We take the garbage out, my kids check the mailbox. You're basically condemning us. If you approve this project, our front yard will become a freeway. It already is horrible. You're talking about, I think, four or 5,000 more cars per day. We don't have anywhere to go. This is our front yard. Our driveways lead to this Garden Highway. It'll turn it into a freeway. So in addition to, you know, smashing through environmentally sensitive areas, blowing through the urban growth boundary, it's just not a sustainable development, and it's not safe. So it's, it's both unsustainable and unsafe for our community. So we urge you to reject it.
Thank you. All right, Kevin McRae is up. Alex Chang is up. And on deck, Ted Costa.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I'm Alex Chang, a native Natomas resident, whose family's actually been in Natomas since the 1950s, and I'm here today because I deeply care about our community. Natomas is special because of its balance between environmental stewardship and growth. The Upper West Side specific plan threatens that. The land is proposed, the land that this plan is proposed on is rich in nutrients close to the river, and once it's developed, lost forever. Paving over it is, increases flood risk by reducing natural absorption, and our roads can barely handle the current population. We're already seeing accidents and deaths on fully developed roads due to drivers who rush, neglect rules, and show little respect for others. May the victims that even I personally knew rest in peace. And if our current services are not effectively addressing these issues now, what makes us think they'll be able to manage it once we add even more residents? And to add, years ago, my neighborhood was alive with the sounds of frogs and crickets at night. Now their silence is a reminder that we're losing this precious wildlife. I also remember seeing herons along the levees, a bird one of our schools is named after, but now they're nowhere to be found. The plan would only further threaten their habitat, and then the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan was created to safeguard these critical habitats, like those of the endangered giant garter snake and the Swainson hawk. And the proposed mitigation strategies are inadequate and insufficient to protect our local wildlife. We should remain committed to keeping our word and preserving what's left to our natural environment instead of continuing to pave over it. We can be smart about growth, and there's room for development within the current urban services boundary, where we can respect the land and resources. Building outside of these boundaries will strain our roads and put everyone at risk, drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, and in emergencies, we'll be in serious trouble. Natomas is unique. Let's preserve what makes it special for future generations and create a community we can all continue to be proud of. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, Ted Costa is up, and Gary Damar is on deck.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I have some property there at Elk Central Road in San Juan, and my family moved there in 1917. That's the same year that the levee was completed, and the family has been there ever since. And I, I support the plan because that's about all that could be done with that property now, that it's surrounded by, by houses from aerial applications. I know you know all the, all those arguments. But I would like to make one other thing, that I'm, I am 83 years old, and in 83 years, I have never seen a Swainson hawk on my property. And so I think, I think someone is obligated to say that they have seen one there. If any five of you, or your staff, or anyone. Yeah, I know, they live along the Garden Highway, and
Thank you.
probably are on the Garden Highway, that's a mile and a half away. But I will be filing with you a, a, a legal declaration of what I'm talking about here today, and it'll be much more in there, because I did work for the Reclamation District for four years, and I used to clean the canals, and I know, I know where the garter snakes are, they're in the canals, and I will submit that to you, a legal declaration under penalty of perjury, so that you can use for your consideration. And I challenge anyone to do the same thing if they've seen any of those animals on my property. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. All right, Gary Damar is up, and Jana Damar is on deck.
Yep, my name's Gary Damar. I came here to support my neighbors on the Garden Highway. I was born here, my dad was born here, and, you know, I was here when, let's see, Bradshaw Road was vineyards, you know, and the Pocket Road was farms, man, you know, and Elk Grove was going to stop at Elk Grove Boulevard, you know, and, you know, you know, it's, it's for each the sky. And then now they've jumped across the road on Elk Horn, and now it's all going out in the rice paddies, all the way up, all the way up into Sutter County. There's going to be thousands of homes up there. They don't need the Garden Highway. We need to keep our farmland. We need the farmland in the country right there. It's the closest thing to the city of Sacramento, and it's the last farmland in Sacramento. There's nothing left. When you take that, it's gone. Once it's gone, you know, I went to the Alhambra Theater too, you know? Now it's a Safeway store. I know you'd like that, but anyway, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking about if there was some way to do a class action lawsuit and sue the levy people because of the devaluation of our homes. It's a nuclear-free zone. We got little wooden stakes every 30 inches, you know, and weeds. So that's what we got left with after the levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damar. Jana Damar, you're up. And Howard Lamborn, you're on deck.
So I'm in agreement with all of those who is opposed to this project. I don't think that the developer is in it for anything but his own profit. The issue of the traffic is huge. I have twice almost been hit head-on because the oncoming traffic was avoiding the group of bike riders that are always riding down this Garden Highway. They have now started the levy work, which has been awful, the dust and the dirt and the noise and the, everything that we are going through for that. Then as soon as that's done and they start this project, we will not have any peace. The, the vibrating, the vibrations and all of that have caused cracks in our house. It's, it's just not a project that should go. We have plenty of places to build homes, we have, they're going everywhere. Have you been out to the Folsom area? My gosh, you would not believe what's behind Slough House going up. There is not a lack of housing. Maybe affordable housing, but I don't think this is what's going to be planned in this little city that they want to put in prime farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lamborn, you are up, and Joss Benga is on deck.
Hi, my name is Howard Lamborn. I'm a pharmacist. I've been in Sacramento, living and working for 48 years. I'm here to express my sport, support for the Upper West Side plan. I think it's going to help our housing crisis. We need housing desperately, and it'll also bring a balanced approach to land use, as it offers smart growth, it offers schools, colleges, parks, and preserving many acres of agricultural buffer. With this plan, it will have a positive impact on economic growth and will generate a lot of tax revenue for the Sacramento area. I, I think growth is inevitable, you can avoid it. I think this plan has hopefully worked all that out, and it will be a positive thing for Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Benga, you are up, and Harpreet Benga, you're on deck.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Jas Benga, and I have been living in Sacramento last 35 years, about 25 years in Natomas area, where this plan is. So I have seen the plan, the proposal. I have read the DEIR also. There are a lot of benefits. That's why I support this plan. But of course, there are some side effects, you can see the issues. They can be mitigated. It's in the report. So reports is officially on your records with the county, that they can be mitigated. Now, just going back a few years, eight, 10 years ago, you know, Sacramento City had a big project called Stadium One, Golden Stadium One, right? A lot of people, they opposed it at that time, a lot of people. But thanks to Kevin Johnson, he made his right decision. He saved the Kings. They were moving to Las Vegas, if you remember. Now, everybody knows Sacramento. He saved the city of Sacramento, Kings, and the arena. That's his legacy. Nobody can take away from him. After a while now, we have a project called Upper West Side. It's one-of-a-kind, unique project, and it will make our Sacramento beautiful. And it's just, it's your legacy, the supervisor's legacy, nobody can take away in the future when, after 20, 30, 40 years from now, you won't be here, I won't be here. But this thing will be here, your legacy will be here. Nobody can take away for centuries, or as long as the city lives. Thank you, and I support this plan, and I urge you to support the plan, please, for our next generations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Harpreet Benga, you're up, and Tony Seikotos is on deck. I had a second chance at that name.
Hello, respected members. I'm here today to support this Upper West Side plan. First of all, I want to thank you for being here today. And as we all know, the details of this project, and I firmly believe that establishing the Upper West Side community will be transformative step for our region, as it offers unique manatee school, colleges, parks, walkability, and would make it ideal for families and local businesses. This development will have a welcoming environment for all ages. This project helps to address our region's housing shortages. We need more housing units where our people have a house, place to live. We don't want people getting chased away from California because of this crisis, and creating more red tapes to make it difficult to build a house. This plan is a perfect solution for our smart growth goals. It will also offer houses, apartments, condos. Best of all, it will also offer agricultural buffer land. It will create countless valuable opportunities for our community. It is a unique project and one-of-a-kind project that will make Sacramento more beautiful and will be more visited place in California. It will add into our region's economic growth. Loss of jobs will be created and will generate millions of dollars in revenues. I'm looking forward for this development of a vibrant community in the near future, and I strongly urge you all to support this project moving forward. And many of my families and friends and their friends, they are not able to come in here tonight to support this project, but I want to thank you, everybody, for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seikotos is up. Did he head out? Rosalynn Bryant is up, and Lynn Randolph is next.
Okay, sorry, I have a little bit of laryngitis. My name is Rosalynn Bryant, and I live in the Riverview subdivision. That is right off the corner, is the corner of San Juan and El Central Road. I moved from South Natomas about 20 years ago, and, I'm sorry, 10 years ago, and I've been in North Natomas, in that area, for about 20 years. It was so nice being able to go down El Central Road, on bike down El Central Road. It was like a little farm road, and it was so nice. But over the years, I have seen it, you know, actually grow. But the nightmare is what I'm looking at, is because I live so close to the 49er truck stop, that is a nightmare. There have been times when I have tried to get out of my subdivision, and I've had to wait, I don't know how long, because of all the traffic coming up towards San Juan, and it's a four-way stop. So it just gets bogged up, and it takes a long, long time to get out of my, just out of my subdivision. When we get across San Juan, going down to the truck stop, the truckers are trying to get out, and nobody's, of course, letting them out. So that bogs up, and it's very dangerous, and it's just been a nightmare. I was looking at the map, and I don't know if it's coming up to that area or not. You might be able to answer that. I couldn't really tell. But, you know, if it comes up to that area, it's just really, and even if they widen El Central Road, El Central Road is like a raceway. I mean, cars just speed down that road, and there's been numerous accidents on that road. There's been pedestrians that have been killed from cycling because it's like a raceway. So if they widen it, it's still going to be even worse. So, you know, I oppose this project because, you know, just because it's going to take away so much farmland, and, you know, and it's just going to be just a nightmare.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. All right, Lynn Randolph is up, and Katie McCammon is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Randolph, and I also reside in Riverview Park at the corner of El Centro and San Juan Road. I strongly oppose the Upper West Side project, as I am a nearly 25-year resident of the area. I raised my family, boy and girl twins, in Riverview Park. We spent many, many days, holidays, birthdays, playdates at the park. We bought strawberries at Perry's Park. We learned golf at Leader's Driving Range, I'm sorry. And my children played nearly every day at Bastille's Pumpkin Patch in October, when they were eight, nine, and 10 years old. All of those places will be gone with this project. We moved to West Natomas for these reasons, as well as many others. And I don't want other families to miss out on the wonderful experiences of knowing that farmland and nature are right in their backyard. There are many other reasons to oppose this project, such as the traffic. Currently during commute time, it can take as much as 10 minutes just to get through the overpass at West El Camino, coming from South Natomas. We would displace wildlife. Lately, West Lake residents have been complaining about increased rodents in their neighborhoods due to the apartment construction at El Centro and Del Paso. That project is probably less than two acres. Imagine what it will be developing thousands. There's also the ability to evacuate in case of an emergency. There's little room to expand and widen existing access roads. There are also many other reasons that my fellow community members have outlined. Please consider our concerns and reject this plan. There are other nearby areas that are approved already to accommodate housing. I wasn't going to mention this, but four years ago, my husband was killed on Garden Highway in a motorcycle accident. So I support my Garden Highway neighbors in their concerns. Please don't pave over what little farmland we have left. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph. Ms. McCammon, and Heather Fargo is on deck.
Hi, I'm Katie McCammon, and I'm a staff with 350 Sacramento, an environmental justice organization, and I support all the other environmental organizations in the area who were in opposition to this plan. I can't really state it better than a lot of the folks who already spoke tonight. So I want to touch on what I've experienced. I live in Del Paso Heights, and since I moved here just a couple years ago, it's been really unique to experience a place that is trying so hard to develop an urban life in the midst of protecting its ecology. That's a very special thing. And this project, obviously, is going to risk that. And so take that very seriously. Climate change is happening. There's no doubt about that. And mitigating it is our job. You have a really awesome opportunity to continue to protect and expand the ecology here and make Sacramento even more unique than it already is. It's amazing thing to be next to a highway that has so many problems that we could probably fix and focus on fixing that. But then right next to that, parallel to that, is a bike trail where I can go and see cranes and a waterway full of life, and it's truly a magical place. So if I was a person with kids, I would say those kids deserve a place like that to grow up in. I couldn't live without nature. And I really hope you think about that and think about the world you want to create for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got Heather Fargo, and then Edith Thatcher is on deck.
Does this one work? Is that the one you meant? Good evening. My name is Heather Fargo, longtime resident of Natomas. And like so many of my neighbors here, I think Natomas is a special place that deserves special attention. You spend a lot of time on that cell tower, and this is 2,000 acres. So please give us that level of attention that you gave the cell tower. We think it's worth it. Like a lot of my neighbors, I am here to strongly oppose the Upper West Side project and to point out to you the many flaws in the environmental impact report. Obviously, with two minutes, I can't share with you all of the reasons I oppose this project or all the problems with the EIR. But as planning commissioners, I know that part of your job is to implement the general plan, the county general plan, and to implement county policies and plans. And this project is so out of line, not just with the county general plan, but with so many plans and policies that the county, that staff and residents have worked on for decades, not just the Natomas Habitat Conservation Plan, but the Urban Services Boundary Plan, which, by the way, is not mentioned or discussed in the EIR. And there are so many impacts to this project that are so severe. Some of them had been mentioned already. We'll certainly be putting a lot of those into our written comments. But when you realize how inconsistent this plan is with the policies and plans of the county, I don't think you have an option but to say no to the project. So I hope you will do that, and I hope that you also will look closely at so many of the impacts that cannot be mitigated and that are so severe. And just as a final note, I want to say that when the Natomas vision was initially voted on decades ago, not the county version, but the city-county version, the idea was that the city of Sacramento would do the development of neighborhoods in the Natomas Basin, and that the county would take care of the farmland and the airport and those areas outside of the urbanization. And this project is completely contrary to that. So I only have two minutes. I could go on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fargo. All right, Ms. Thatcher, you are up, and Steve Schweigert is on deck.
Is it possible? So there's been a lot of talk already this evening about the urban services boundary.
Can you shift over to the microphone here? There you go.
Thank you very much. There's been a lot of talk this evening about the urban services boundary. So I thought I would bring a map and show it to you, so you can see what it looks like in the Natomas Basin. So that's the lower part of the Natomas Basin. Did I do that, or did you do that? So, okay, the point --
It's like we're at the airport, flying in and out.
The point I'd like to make is that there's not just one project outside of the urban services boundary. In the Natomas Basin, there are three, and there's one that's already been approved. And so what I was going to try and ask you to do is to consider that. When people are talking about traffic problems, impact on the city, city services, issues with flooding, it's not just the Upper West Side. Grand Park is 5,000 acres proposed for commercial and residential. We've been told that the DEIR for that will be coming out next summer. This is Airport South Industrial. That is 6 million-plus square feet of warehousing, next to communities and schools. And then we have Upper West Side also of 2,000 acres. The people speaking before me, almost all of them, have mentioned traffic. Please, think about it. It's not just Upper West Side. This is huge. And finally, Watt-EV, which I think you already know about, is a charging station for semi-trucks, and that has already been approved, and more traffic. So what's being imposed on our roads here is enormous. These fears are real, and the impacts on city services are as well. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Chair, Rachel. For people bringing up exhibits or photos, if they want those to be part of the record, we either need a copy or a photo, or they can just give it to us.
Perfect. All right, just give me one second, Steve. Loose Limb is on deck. All right, Steve, you have a floor.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Steve Schweigert. I'm working to protect our natural areas and agricultural lands and reach our statewide national 30-by-30 goals. But our region is severely behind. We only have 9% of our land protected compared to the Bay Area that has 30% already and looking to protect 50%. So we need to catch up. I oppose this project. It's counter to the county's policies to protect open space and farmland. SECOG recently adopted their blueprint land use map for their current projections and where we should be building. It does not include this project. The general plan states the county will support implementation of SECOG's blueprint. And the initial planning that was done, it basically relies on this being in the blueprint. The draft EIR attempts to dance around that conflict by stating that somehow it complies by just meeting the goals of that, but doesn't mean it's in the map, right? The region will not meet its greenhouse gas reduction targets if we develop outside those blueprint boundaries, and there's already issues where they can't meet that with their projections now, which could cause us to lose our transportation funding. The DIR needs to analyze what the effects of that are. Also, the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan will be severely undermined. This area was predicated on staying in agriculture, and North Natomas and Metro Air Park were developed based on that. Developing this land is incompatible. You'll notice in the draft EIR, there's requests from CDFW, Fish and Wildlife Service, LAFCO, and the city for analysis of how it would impact the Habitat Conservation Plan, which is totally lacking in the DEIR. It removes almost a third of the Swainsons Hawk Zone in Sacramento County, which is the one-mile buffer from the Sacramento River. It's critical to the species and diminishes our already impacted areas that the hawks have to forage. Thank you, and we urge your rejection of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Schweigert. All right, Loose Limb is up, and Susan Hare is on deck.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for the correct name pronunciation. I have many concerns and doubts surrounding the safety and affordability of housing in the project area. Even if the project develops an affordable housing strategy, there are a few site-specific issues that drive up costs of living. These issues will not be addressed in the near future. First, the Upper West Side specific plan area is in a floodplain, and as the DEIR says, it is susceptible to land subsidence or sinking of the land. This project certainly wouldn't help the situation. Developing and increasing the weight load on land that is susceptible to land subsidence will further lower the already-low floodplain and consequently drive up the flood risks. This drives up construction costs to build code-safe housing and may This drives up construction costs to build code-safe housing and may also have unaccounted impacts on adjacent regions. What is the plan to keep hazard mitigation costs down and make sure that the affordable housing is actually affordable? And will regional subsidence impacts be assessed with each project proposal? Could cumulative effects impede full buildout of the proposed structures? Secondly, although the project area is geographically close to existing metropolitan centers, this point is made by the lack of transit infrastructure. This is not a high-priority transit region, and necessary transit will not be built anytime soon. How affordable will living be if people need their own cars for work and everyday necessities, particularly through initial phases of development, when essential resource centers may not be fully built? These issues are fundamental to the project area. We should not forego important regional planning policies to allow development on this land. The SECOG blueprint states that we are already entitling two and a half times the land for housing that we will need over the next 20 years. We don't need to focus on approving more land. We need to focus on getting housing built in already zoned vacant land within the Urban Services Boundary and on infill in regions that already have the necessary infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hare. All right. Susan Hare is up, and Sri Ram is on deck.
Chair Wraithel and planning commissioners. I'm Susan Haree, the president of the Board of Directors of ECOS, Environmental Council of Sacramento. We submitted a letter today for your reading. This is Penn Station. It was destroyed in 1963 after passenger traffic declined. There was an international outcry, causing, two years later, the formation of the New York Landmarks Commission to make sure that nothing like that destruction ever happened again. Now, this, of course, is Notre Dame Cathedral in Paris on fire. In 2019, it burned. They could have torn it down, but they wouldn't think of it. There would have been an international outcry. But we're in California. Our treasures are different. They are, in fact, nature itself. We prize our open space. So tonight, we've heard about the blueprint. We've heard about Urban Services Boundary and the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. These planning actions are like the Landmarks Commission in New York. They're our planning legacy. So if you go ahead and approve this tonight and keep the process rolling, there won't be an international outcry. But perhaps, a couple of years down the road, maybe people will say never again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haree. All right. Sri Ram is up, and Joseph Brazil is on deck.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sri Ram Tendrew. I currently work for the state of California as an IT project manager. I have lived in the Sacramento area for almost 30 years. And as someone who's intimately familiar with this area, I am here to express my strong support for this Upper West Side specific plan project. I have several reasons. I know I have very limited time. Maybe I'll be able to cover all of them. Number one, at the top of my list is anybody paying attention to the economic life of this country, of this state, of this region, is fully aware of the housing shortage, especially when it comes to multifamily and duplexes. This project is going to produce upwards of more than 9,000 units, more than half of which are going to be multifamily and duplexes. So I think this project goes a long way to alleviate some of the problems related to housing shortage in Sacramento region. The other thing that makes me strongly support this project is the location. It's less than five miles from the location of this project is about almost 200,000 jobs. And so, as some of the concerns that were expressed about vehicles, miles, travels, VNT, or the greenhouse gas emissions, the fact that you're reducing the commute, I think, will help to meet those goals. The urban town center that is being planned is patterned along the lines of the Santana Row in San Jose, would help with commercial activity as well as create new jobs. There is, part of the project is a proposal for a west-side canal, which I think would help with the beautification and provide a unique urban waterfront experience. Finally, this area, this project has been in discussion for more than two decades. And all during this timeframe, North Natomas has been developed, projects have been approved in Placer Vineyards and West Roseville. These are locations that are much farther away from the job centers, which cause sprawl and cause traffic jams and cause greenhouse gas emissions. So something that is so close to job centers, meeting smart growth principles, I think, should be supportive. Thank you.
All right. Joseph Brazil is up, and on deck is Steve Ardidi.
Esteemed Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Joe Brazil. My family has been farming 120 acres in the Upper West Side project area for well over 80 years now. Unfortunately, urbanization, changing conditions, and many other problematic issues has made agriculture no longer economically viable or profitable for us. We actually were forced to sell some of our land in order to simply keep our farming operation going. Plainly stated, our land is simply not prime agricultural land, no matter what anyone says. Let me back this up with a few facts. Number one, theft. We can't leave tractors or equipment in fields overnight. People also come into our fields, they trample and steal the crops and also any of the materials we leave there. Number two, vandalism. This is definitely a problem in the fields. It's a real issue for our crops and our machinery. Number three, farming restrictions on our methods, timing, pesticides, et cetera. These are all enacted due to the proximity of all the homes and businesses all around the area. Number four, water table and soil and mineral erosion. This limits the types of crops we plant and prevents us from planting in orchard. And I know you guys are all fond of eucalyptus trees, but unfortunately, no eucalyptus trees on our property. Sorry. The good news, though, is that Upper West Side has some solutions. Number one, mitigation land. It offers a one-to-one mitigation ratio of prime farmland contributed for every acre of developed land in the project. This ensures that wild development goes forward, farmland preservation continues in areas that are much more better suited for agriculture. Plus, the project includes a 534-acre agricultural buffer to help with open space and protect the surrounding farmland. Wildlife, wow, it's two minutes, it's that quick. Just one more thing. Wildlife, it produces the corridors and habitat restoration efforts as part of the plan. Housing shortage, it will help in that area, and it will create nearly 90,000 new jobs during construction and also after in the long term. So just in closing, thank you. In closing, I respectfully and humbly request that you support the Upper West Side development along with me and my family, who has dedicated 80 years to farming this land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and members, my name is Steve Ardidi. I reside with my wife Melva on the Garden Highway. I'm not going to tell you how old, because you'll be able to figure out how old I am. But I want to resonate with all the folks who have expressed concerns and objections, frankly, to this plan as it currently exists. I remember, as well as others here, the development of the current urban limit line, services line, and so forth. Much research, back and forth, input went into the development of that. It had compromises, but it was a thoughtful effort to sort of balance the need for development with the values of preservation of open space, habitat, and agriculture. Have not yet heard an argument for why this particular project needs to ride roughshod over that. Someone raised a question before, why can this not be done within that, those lines, to say nothing of other areas of town that are just begging for development? For example, the rail yards, the river district. So I would urge you to look very carefully at the policies that have been so carefully developed, the compromises and the balancing that's been done, and ask yourselves whether there's really a case to just ride a roughshod over that with this new development. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to take a brief moment here, since it's 8:30. I just remind everyone, where we're at now is we're taking comments on the environmental impact report. So that's really what we want to hear as much as we can tonight, so the staff can prepare responses to any concerns you have with the environmental impact report. You'll have another opportunity to address the CPAC on the approval or denial of this project. We are not taking any action on approval or denial tonight, or recommendation to approve or deny. And then it will be back before this body and then the Board of Supervisors also. So we welcome all of your comments about whether we should make a recommendation to approve or deny, but just want to make sure everybody's clear on where we're at in the process. We won't be making that recommendation tonight. Tonight, we are just taking as much of your concerns in as we can about any issues with the environmental impact report, so we can make sure that we work with staff. Staff can work with other staffs at other agencies, so we can try and address any gaps or any concerns with that environmental impact report. That's it. You still have your two minutes. You can say anything you'd like within those two minutes, but just wanted to kind of remind you where we're at in the process. Next up, we've got Lalania Rothenberger, and after that, Marilyn Pendola.
Good evening. My name is Lalania Rothenberger, and I'm the Executive Director of Facilities and Strategic Planning for Natomas Unified School District. And we've been involved with this project since the beginning, and we appreciate the opportunities that we've been given so far to be part of the process, from the Technical Advisory Committee to where we're at now. We did submit comment letters on the Urban Services Plan as well as the Public Facilities Financing Plan and on the draft EIR. So in regard to the draft EIR, I do want to state that all of our schools need to be built in compliance with the California Department of Education. And that is the size of the land. And depending on what the environmental issue is on the site or the proximity to other hazards like gas lines, electrical lines, all that needs to be considered. So while the plan shows four schools, all four plans show four schools are going to need to be here based off the students that are going to be generated, we need some ability and flexibility and assurances that as we work with the California Department of Education to build these schools, that they're going to be in compliance, that we're not given a lot of land that's too small or doesn't meet the needs that we need for our students. And then, part of your guys' policies, of course, and the framework that you have, does require the Urban Services Plan and the Public Facilities Financing Plan. And right now, after we've done analysis on best-case scenarios, if we were to pass a general obligation bond and levy the highest amount of developer fees that we could get and spend it all on the buildout of these schools, we would not have enough money to build these schools. And so, the developer, the applicant has been meeting with us, but right now, there is no policy that requires mitigation of that potential funding gap that can ensure, before there's vested entitlements and before this moves forward, that we can meet the need of Natomas Unified School District students and their community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Marilyn Pendola is up, and Lori Harmon is on deck.
When I first moved here, 18, 20 years ago, Natomas was an uncongested haven for both people and the animals and birds and wildlife that lived there. Since then, the natural environment of our beautiful area has been systematically destroyed with mega complexes, apartment buildings, huge industrial complexes, and thousands of new homes. I remember we had red-tailed hawks and sparrow hawks. We had the sweet little ground owls that would peep up out and look at you. They're all gone. There were rabbits and rodents and foxes and coyotes and occasional deer. Because of human development, they are no longer here. We must preserve the open land that is left. We must preserve the open land that is left. We must be stewards of our natural environment. We must be the voice for the creatures who have no voice. I oppose this project and the degradation of the natural world that it will destroy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pendola. All right. Lori Harmon is up, and Liz Bergeron is on deck.
My name is Lori Harmon. I am a retired sergeant from the CHP. I worked for them for 27, proudly worked for them for 27 years. I will add that I am not in any way representing them tonight. I am not against development. My family's in development. I'm certainly not against our farmers selling their land. I strongly oppose this project for a lot of reasons, but for one, it's reckless and it disregards the people who already live here. I've lived in Natomas for 25 years. I've seen how traffic has been impacted. This development proposes 9,000 housing units, which should bring about at least 20,000 vehicles to our four roads, West El Camino, El Centro, Garden Highway, and San Juan. Two of those four roads can't be widened. They're levy roads. There's nowhere to put that other, those extra traffic. We're stuck with it. I've heard countless people talk about accidents that they've seen. I can tell you, I've been there and I've seen them. They're bad. People are impatient. At the West El Camino-I-80 interchange, people are impatient. They run that light. It's not safe for pedestrians. I won't even ride my bike over there. I know that emergency response time is detrimental. It can save lives. I've been there. I've been a responder, and I know how frustrating it can be, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, knowing someone needs my help and I can't get there because of congestion, because there's no way to pass. There's no way to get around. I want to be clear again, I'm not against the farmers or I'm not against development. This is a reckless, just a reckless disregard for the people who have already been there for nothing more than profit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Bergeron is up, and Deborah Lugo is on deck.
All right. Thank you. You pronounced my name perfectly. Not many people do. I've been a resident of Natomas for 17 years, and for the past five years, I've lived in Swallows Nest, which is on the corner of Garden Highway and Orchard Lane. Prior to that, I lived in Westlake, and frequently, I commuted downtown, to my job downtown, taking El Centro, San Juan, and Garden Highway because I-5 was backed up then, and it's gotten even worse since then. So my primary concern is traffic, traffic congestion, and we've heard a lot about that tonight. But beyond the safety concerns, I'm also troubled by the piecemeal approach being taken with the development projects in the Natomas Basin, as Edith mentioned earlier. And the other concern I have is, and I'm not sure how this works, but the traffic impacts seem to be in the city while this project seems to be in the county. So I have real concerns about how to address that. But I think that you need to consider the cumulative effect of the multiple developments across the Natomas Basin rather than the piecemeal approach. I have personal experience with this. As in my professional role, I worked for the Pacific Crest Trail Association, and we had a 2,650-mile corridor, and we saw a lot of piecemeal planning, and I've seen the impacts of that. So I do hope that you will consider that, and I strongly oppose the project.
Thank you. All right. Deborah is...
All right, Deborah's up, and Georgia Prescott is on deck.
Yes, hello. Thank you. My name is Deborah Lugo, and I've lived in South Natomas for over 35 years. And I'm very concerned and opposed to this project. I'm concerned about the traffic, mainly on Garden Highway, which you've heard a lot of. And I would urge all of you to maybe drive down there this weekend and take a look at it. This is the city portion, not the county portion, but Army Corps of Engineer is still working on the levy down on the county side, and there are still semi-trucks traveling down Garden Highway, which should be prohibited from doing. And if you go down Garden Highway by all of the businesses, like Chevys, Virgin Sturgeon, and so forth, you will see a crack down the center of the highway, where many years ago, Army Corps of Engineer came in and put down a 25-foot slurry wall. And that was probably about 12 years ago. They need to go deeper, but they didn't want to touch this, that portion this time. But the road is actually splitting. There is nothing that has been done to any of the outlying roads ever, since I've lived there. It's quite a mess, and I would urge you to come and visually look at this, because there is no way, no way, that we can support a city running off this road in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Georgia, you're up, and Dana Schwartz is on deck.
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, and everybody's talked about traffic, but I feel like probably you need to hear it from everybody. So let me just say that I think this is actually a very interesting project. It's just in the wrong place. And I live about a half a block from Garden Highway, and I can tell you that present traffic right now on Garden Highway is a lot. And then you add 30 or 40 bicyclists in a group going, I play a lot of golf in Teal Bend. And if you have to get around these bicyclers, and the trucks that are there, and the cars that are there, and then to add this kind of additional motor vehicles, motor cars, you just don't want to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. All right, Dana Schwartz is up, and Harriet Steiner is on deck. And Dana, I'll have you pull that other microphone down. Pull both of them together there. There we go. Just make sure they can hear you on the big screen at home, you know, if they're watching.
Well, I will be very brief. I want you to ask yourself, why are they planning this project? Given that the EIR, which is what you want us to talk about, says it will increase noise, air pollution, create major traffic problems, pave over farmland, and destroy wildlife habitat while increasing the potential of flooding. This will not benefit the Natomas community. There is plenty of infill land to build on in Natomas and address the housing shortage. So who is going to profit from this project? I beg you to follow the money and reject this project.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Steiner is up, and Carmen Lugo is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Harriet Steiner, and you're doing a great job pronouncing all of our names. I'm here because I think this project has so many problems, and so many problems that those of us who live in Natomas, like I do, will inherit as this project goes through, if it should be approved. I think the EIR ignores the fact that there are planning documents that set urban limit lines, and general plans that set development guidelines, and none of them contemplate this project. So first, I would say that this, the EIR is inadequate, because it fails to actually look at the impacts of this project on the rest of Natomas and the rest of the county that, that were never considered and asked to jump ahead to some, you know, right now, and caught, you know, and amend all of these plans without any actual global, I'll call it global, regional, county-wide look at this. And the worst offender is the urban services boundary. Now, maybe I feel fondly about that, because I was a young attorney when I represented Secog, and we put the, all of those things started to go into effect, and they've served us well. And they served us well because they were boundaries, and things happened within the boundaries, and outside the boundaries, there was conservation, and there was agriculture, and there was keeping nature together with the development of Natomas. And I, now we are faced with four different projects, which have thousands of houses, and hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial and industrial. Each one wants to go forward, each one doesn't want to look at the other ones, and the county has never looked at what the impacts of all of those changes would be together. And I think that that's really important. And I think it's really important also, for the EIR perspective, to have the county really look at what the impacts of the city, on the city are, and to say, why is this project going to go forward in the county when all the impacts are in the city, when it has to connect to the city, when the only roads, which are woefully inadequate to hold this project, go through the city? I think this, as one of the other speakers says, is maybe an okay project, but it's in the wrong place, and it's bringing to you lots of traffic generators, and lots of other issues, without any of the infrastructure necessary to do this. There's a reason why major shopping centers happen next to freeways, and this is not it. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Carmen, you are up, and Nancy Snyder is on deck.
Hi, I'm Carmen Lugo, and I live in the Whittier Ranch area. I say leave Sacramento green. I oppose the development of the Upper West Side. I do not want to see another Los Angeles area, one city budding up against another. The reason for this proposed development is pure greed on the side of the county and our cities, collecting more revenue, property taxes, permit fees, and for developers. It is profits at the expense of residents living here. The increased revenue is a result of the passage of Prop. 13. The authorities have figured out a backdoor to getting more money. What do we get for the increased revenue? Residents have to contend with increased traffic, air pollution, crime, crowded living conditions, and worst of all, the loss of our natural habitat. We cannot destroy the habitat and not have to deal with consequences. The environmental impact report does not include the impact of building on coyotes' hunting grounds. Sacramentoans are totally unaware of the tyranny that occurs when coyotes come into their neighborhoods. Coyotes have already been seen in Natomas Park, Swanson Estates. Cats, small dogs, squirrels, possums, wild turkeys are starting to disappear. The counties and the cities' response to this situation is to keep your pets inside. Shall we keep our toddlers inside, too? Even one attack is too many. What about the free space open for the migratory birds that stop to rest? I love watching those birds land. We do not have a right to that land. It belongs to nature. This is not the Sacramento that we want to live in. Believe me, we don't want to see a concrete jungle, more people, and traffic congestion. There is no compromise. Sacramento needs to stay green, to protect our way of life.
Thank you, Ms. Lugo.
And to keep us unique as an area that has a lot of greenery. Do not allow greed to control your way of thinking. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, Nancy Snyder.
It's been well said, so thank you.
Thank you. Carol Turgeon is up, and Charles Waters is on deck. Carol? We'll have Charles come on up.
Good evening. My name is Charles Waters. I'm a longtime Natomas resident, and my wife and I live immediately adjacent to the proposed project area, so we know it well. We've been following it for five years now, since it was introduced. I had concerns initially, when I first heard about the project. Now, after reading the EIR, my concerns are magnified exponentially. My wonderful Natomas neighbors have so articulately outlined all of the things, and many more, that I'm concerned about, but I'd like to just focus on one number in my comments. 25,460. I'll say it again. Every impact that has been articulated tonight stems from that, the number of potential residents that would be relatively approached, or pardon me for stumbling over that, but 25,460 is mentioned in the draft environmental impact report as the number of potential residents that would be impacted by this project. So 25,000 residents would be approximately the size of an LA city like South Pasadena. Do we want to bring South Pasadena to Natomas? Or El Cerrito in the Bay Area? Do we want to have a city like that size in the Natomas area? I don't think so. I think my neighbors have articulately said that we don't want that as well, so thank you very much. I oppose this project.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. All right, we've got Louis Sparza is up, and Yadwinder Sandhu is on deck. Louis had to leave. Yadwinder Sandhu is up, and Lori Tenhope is on deck. I don't see Lori standing up. So Ron Costa is on deck. Lori's a good kid, perfect. Mr. Sandhu, you have the floor.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. And this is Yadwinder Sandhu. I am resident of Natomas, Sacramento, for the last many, many years. And for your kind information, I am also running a soccer group and a community group composed of about 200 members for the last 15 years. And for your kind information, we support, we all, but today, I am here from that on behalf of all, and we support this project, and this upper Natomas, this should be developed. And let me come to the point in short. We still have home crisis in California in millions, and in Sacramento in thousands, so that we need more homes to accommodate the population, who are not getting the homes right now. Lot of the people could not buy homes because of the high prices, and prices are high because of home crisis. Therefore, we need lot of land for the new construction, and we support this Upper West Side plan, so that some part of the population can be accommodated in that area. This project site is very convenient to the downtown, airport, and freeways, as well as the environmental port. I read that one. That's okay with that one. That's favorable. And secondly, we will also get a few more schools, colleges, and libraries for the bright future of our kids. As per the plan, lot of the playgrounds, parks, lakes, canals, and greenery, farm greenery, urban farm greenery, will boost the environment. Eco-friendly transportation system is also part of this plan. Moreover, commercial zone includes the hotels, motels, and the, this hospitals, clinics, markets, create a lot of employment opportunities to finally, government bodies will generate lot of revenues through the taxes. In the end, once again, I want to mention that myself and my community, my soccer group support this, strongly support this Upper West Side project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Lori, you are up, and Ron Costa is on deck.
Good evening. Thank you for staying here so late. I'm Lori Tenhope, a homeowner in Natomas. I have several concerns with this project, starting with flood risk. We all know we're in a flood basin dependent on a ring of levies that are still undergoing strengthening. We're one of the most at-risk cities in the county for, in the country for catastrophic flooding. I love my neighborhood, but our flood risk is a deep concern to me and my family. A new development of this size puts added pressure on the levies and the entire flood protection infrastructure. By paving over farmland and open space, runoff is accelerated. Climate change adds additional uncertainty with unprecedented weather patterns, increasing the possibility of a flood protection failure. A related concern is traffic congestion. How quickly can residents of this proposed project evacuate when also competing with Natomas and Sacramento? Finally, a point of pride for me, and I think many Sacramentoans, is the connection to our agricultural heritage. The proximity to farms fosters the local farm-to-fork movement. Let's not pave over this rich ag land that surrounds the city and provides us with food, aesthetic beauty, and rich habitat for wildlife. Please consider these comments and reject this project. It's not needed at this time. It'll put undue pressure on adjacent communities, and other areas are better suited for development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ron is up, and Oscar Balaguer is on deck.
Thank you. I'm going to start out with the last first. I'm for the project. I think it's badly needed. We went out and we had all these children, and then they had children, grandchildren. We have to have a place to house them. There is a housing shortage. Our children and grandchildren do not have the wherewithal to go out and start a development. So it's up to us to do it. It's our responsibility to do it. You can't just cut them loose and then say, you're on your own, I got mine. We need to build that housing, and this is a project that has been looked at carefully. They did a beautiful job on the EIR. The EIR addresses, addresses the concerns that have been raised here today about hawks and snakes and all that business. So just refer to that booklet, the EIR, for the environmental concerns. Farming, our family, 1917, was on El Centro and San Juan, right in that vicinity there, and we still have the family farm on El Centro. I moved over there when I was, in 1951. I'm now 87 years old, and I'm in it for the money. You know, farming doesn't get it. You'll go broke if you ever try to farm that thing and make a living off of it. So sell the land and use the money to do some good. So just to wind it up, I am in it for the money.
I'm not in it for the money.
Hold on just one second. Megan Elseya, you're on deck.
It's Balaguer, by the way. You did great. Hi, so I'm Oscar Balaguer. I'm with 350 Sacramento. It's a climate change advocacy group. We've got a lot of comments. We'll submit written comments, but I'll just mention three of our concerns tonight in the interest of time. First, Upper West Side is outside of the UPA, so it relies on Land Use Policies 119, 120. We believe those, that the project cannot tear from the General Plan ZIR in regard to those policies, because actually, they were not developed, those policies, until after the 2010 EIR for the General Plan was completed. And the certification of that EIR, and the findings that the county made in adopting them, don't cure the, the lack of analysis regarded by CEQA Section 21094. Second, the products, the project's greenhouse gas mitigation is inappropriately considered on a project-specific on a project-specific basis, contrary to the county general plans, to the county's 2011 promise to mitigate GHG emissions by adopting a climate action plan within one year. This is in 2011. The advantages of a cap over default CEQA project-specific mitigation are the reason that that mitigation was credible back then. The effect of now proceeding on a project-specific basis is exactly as if the county had never proposed any mitigation at all back in 2011. We don't think that's appropriate legally or morally. Finally, third subject --
I used a little of your time to start with, so go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'll end up briefly. Third, project mitigation for VMT assumes full build-out. However, such a build-out will be indefinitely delayed because of the vast oversupply of already entitled projects within the UPA. This project is not needed, is not going to bring any new housing to market that wouldn't otherwise be built economically with projects that are already approved and zoned for their development. The county has not substantiated how the modeled build-out will occur. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Balaguer. All right. Megan is up, and I've got Har on deck.
Megan Elsie, also with 350 Sacramento, a climate justice organization. Does that work? Hurricane Helene, okay. Caused somewhere between $30 and $47 billion of damages recently. Why am I talking about something that occurred across the country? Because it killed people, was very expensive, and was caused, at least in part, by climate change. Climate change happens because of burning fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are burned when you increase vehicle miles traveled. This project is outside of the urban services boundary, which will increase vehicle miles traveled. Yes, of course, we need affordable housing. My son became homeless this summer for a time, and is very low income. He needs housing, but it's not this kind of housing that's far out, that's away from public transportation. There's plenty of spots to build housing along light rail and established bus routes now, places that are accessible to services by public transportation and by bicycles, which this new project will not be. Also, it takes away from agricultural land. Agriculture done correctly, regenerative agriculture can actually sink carbon and mitigate climate, the climate crisis. If you pave over it, there's no chance to do that. Same with all the hawks and all this beautiful stuff. It's beautiful, but also, nature sequesters carbon, so once you take it away, you lose that ability. Also, this is a flood zone, so the chances of increased climate disasters are bigger in this area. The EIR is deficient because it does not consider all these aspects that I've just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I have Har, or possibly Harv. And on deck, I have Arthur Gibson Howell.
Hello, everyone. My name is Herwinder Sam. I live in Westlake so many years. I just like this plan and to be approved. I don't want to say too many things. It's too late now. Thank you for everyone.
Thank you. All right. Arthur, you are up, and Patrice Stafford is on deck.
My name is Arthur Gibson Howell, Natomas resident specifically on Garden Highway. I was originally a little upset that I got here early and got to hear all about the cell tower, but actually, I was quite excited to learn how much you guys negotiate over, or, you know, talk about each other over the little things like the visual aspects of it being 55-foot tall versus 85-foot tall and what kind of tree it is, because for this, we're talking about 25,000 new residents, 10,000 new homes, up to 5 million square feet of resident, or built, of commercial space, so that will definitely require a lot of discussion as to how that's going to be. So as to do with the draft, the DEIR, one thing I can talk about is the cultural resources. The land that is planned on being developed in the Upper West Side project was originally part of the watershed of the Sacramento River before the levee was built, and was a known area of historical tribal activity and burial site. When any construction on Garden Highway is planned, there is a requirement to investigate on a parcel-by-parcel basis for any historical archaeological resources, even though the land on Garden Highway has been elevated by dredging from the river and fill from elsewhere to build the aforementioned levee. Any development in the Upper West Side specific plan will have to excavate into the original watershed to the actual depth and below of these culturally significant areas, potentially causing irreparable harm. My question is, is there a plan to investigate mitigation measures CUL 2A and CUL 2B on a plot-by-plot basis, or just go and say, "Well, this is a 20-acre parcel. It looks fine"? And then the other part of population and housing. The new project envisions population density equivalent to the most crowded parts of New York City of approximately 18,000 per square mile, with no real mass transit and a job geography that requires most people to drive. The DER states that they believe significant portions of residents will work in the project footprint and walk, bike, Uber, or carpool, but that does not reflect the reality of life in California. And finally, what was mentioned about the Garden Highway needing widening, from what I can tell, the Army Corps is not going to allow it. So if this project, if the DEIR says it has to be widened and it cannot, then that puts an end to this project right there, as far as I can see. But I would like to apply for a permit for a car and passenger ferry in case the project is approved, so I can ferry people from Natomas to downtown via the river. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Patrice, you are up, and Bill Schaumburg, you're on deck.
My name is Patrice Stafford, and I'm a retired civil engineer from the county of Sacramento and Caltrans. With the county, the last place I worked was the county sewer department, and 1997, I popped every manhole in South Natomas to find out why everything was, all the alarms were going off. So I know the whole area related to where the problems are regarding our water table. And so the levee work will help, because when we plotted the, we plotted the flows along with the rivers, it was just a one-hole, the water is just underneath the ground, right there at the ground. So, but, I would say, I am in favor of this project because everything else around it has a specific plan, so this area needs a specific plan, too. The part about how long it will take for this proposal to come to fruition, that could be staged so that the transportation infrastructure could be built at the truck stop and further along San Juan and El Centro. I just almost saw a big accident on my way here. And so, one of the things is, maybe because, once it gets built, then maybe these smaller neighborhoods, these people that are using it as a cut-through, won't do that anymore. So that's one way. But also, I see that there's buffer for the environmental protection of Garden Highway and the properties that are already there, and so I think that it's pretty smart development. And I think, that I think it should be approved with a commitment from the county transportation department to put in their master plans the work that is required in this area.
Thank you. Next up, I've got Bill Schaumburg, and then Johanna Williams is on deck.
I'm Bill Schaumburg, and I oppose it. I live on the Garden Highway. Friday, when I was coming home from Woodland, five was backed up from Woodland to who knows that way, which, towards Sacramento. They've added an off-ramp at the airport exit. That was full of people. I got in line. That line of traffic followed me, and went 45 miles an hour, which is a speed limit, down Garden Highway to my residence, and I went to pull into my driveway, in which you have to pretty much stop to get down onto your property. There was 25 cars behind me, all very pissed off, beeping, and very upset that I slowed down that flow. Last week, I got off of 80 on El Centro, or West El Camino, and El Centro was backed up, clear past San Juan, clear into the residential district. And I have a video of that. I'm not sure how to put that on here.
Oops. We don't, we don't need video tonight. We believe you.
It's terrible. Anyway, I oppose it.
Thank you.
And I like open space.
All right. Johanna Williams.
Good evening. I'm Johanna Williams, and I am a homeowner in the Willow Creek area of Sacramento, and I'm here to say that I strongly oppose this project, for all the reasons stated in the DEIR that appear to be unmedicable, the severe damage and the serious impacts that you can't mitigate. And I don't see that, I'm really curious about the purpose of this project. It can't possibly be housing, because we've got millions and millions and millions of dollars that we don't even know where it's going, for housing projects that are, that's in the pipeline right now. So I don't see where this fits in with that. So, again, I, for all the reasons previously stated, I strongly oppose this project.
Thank you. And last but not least, Terry Burns. If I didn't call your name, let me know. You can come down and make a comment. But Terry Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll associate myself with the remarks of Mayor Fargo, those who spoke to the urban services boundaries, those who spoke to the substandard highway, and most particularly those who spoke to the flood issue. Natomas is called the Natomas Basin because they used to sail ships through it. We are at risk of flooding. Unfortunately, the EIR has very conflicting statements about how it's going to deal with any emergency services, both access for emergency services personnel and egress in this situation where there's a flood or some other disaster. I think that's a significant part of your concern. As well, I'm a former member of Drowning Accident Rescue Team. There's a talk about drainage canals. Drainage canals that are cement and are fixed get very slippery and very slick, and I can't tell you the number of children I have pulled out of drainage canals who were dead because they couldn't get out of that drainage canal. So I would like to see some mitigation done there. Likewise, I'm currently a member of the River City Waterways Alliance, who does cleanup in the canals and the creeks and the rivers around here. We've taken out millions of pounds of trash. There is nothing in this EIR that talks about the maintenance of those canals, and who will be responsible for pulling out the trash and the other things that go in there, and disposing of that trash. So I would encourage you to be sure that that is resolved. Again, this is not a destination project. It can be put in any of the places that are currently approved to build housing. I would encourage you to do so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. All right. Anyone that did not have the opportunity to address the commission this evening that would like to. All right. We are going to go ahead and close the public comments, and we'll give the applicant the opportunity, if they would like, to address anything. And with that, I'll turn to the commissioners. Any further questions or comments on the draft EIR this evening for the record? Commissioner Corona Sabaniano.
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all the residents in Natomas and throughout Sacramento, whether you're, you know, for this or oppose. Just thank you for taking the time to be here this late on a Monday. I'm just curious to hear from staff. I heard several times that the draft EIR wasn't sufficient, so just wondering if you wanted to respond to that or give us a --
It's really, it's really not the time, if you want to, but the whole purpose of the, it's not a hearing, so the purpose is to receive all the verbal comments, and then they are going to respond in the final EIR, but they're going to have some time to do that. But to respond right now, unless you want to, it's really not what this particular item is for, until it comes back, which it will.
Okay. Okay. So will we see the, I guess, where, when and where will we be able to see some of the responses to the concerns or issues raised tonight?
I'll try to answer that. The slide that's showing right now says TBD, which is, we don't have a date yet, obviously. We're going to be back out at the Natomas CPAC targeting December. Once we get all the comments in, and I think Ms. Patton indicated October 28th is the deadline for that, we have to obviously go through all the comments, including those oral comments received here, as well as at the CPAC earlier this month, figure out how to respond to all of them. It'll take a coordinated effort with all the topic area specialists. Once we have a better sense of the magnitude of work in order to respond to all the comments, we can better articulate when we anticipate that being published.
I think that's for me. That's it for me, then. Thank you.
Commissioner Boha.
Thank you again for everybody for putting up with this very long hearing, but actually very necessary hearing, because I think it provides us an opportunity to have both sides of the aisle, whether you're for the project or against the project, to have your voice. I think, just question for the staff, or maybe more of a comment to put on record. I'd like to really see whether there, we've received comment letters from our other neighboring jurisdictions, whether the city on a corridor planning, or Recommission 1000 on the issues with the levees, or even SECOG. I mean, we're seeing SECOG's comments through here, through articles in the media, but we're not really seeing representatives here, or even SACRTI. And I'm a public employee for my day job, but I think it behooves us to have coordination between government agencies to really see what are elected officials in all those different places are up to say, and also what we're trying to do holistically, if we're looking at this, not just as a bifurcated project, but also, hopefully, as a corridor. And then, there were some comments about Natomas Unified there that came through, and also access on EMS, so we'd really like to be able to see if fire or county sheriff would also have some comments on the EIR, and look forward to really working with you, the applicant, and also all of the folks that are against, to hopefully, early next year, if we can have a more robust discussion. But thank you for everyone this evening. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Devlin.
Yeah, just echo some of the comments of my colleague. Thank you to everyone who came out. Certainly, we do appreciate the public input process. We know that it is a late evening, but thank you all very much for coming out, and a special thank you to Mayor Heather Fargo for coming out still here, who's been really a tireless advocate for the issues that she cares about in this community, in this region, for a good number of years. It's great to see her again.
Commissioner Conklin, anything to add?
Just want to thank and acknowledge all those that --
Just want to thank and acknowledge all those that came out this evening and provided their voice, and I know that there's a lot of mixed views, and it's a contentious issue, and this is a journey, and there will be many other bites of the apple to, and opportunities to voice that opinion. So just a thankful acknowledgement to both staff and their hard work, and those that came out tonight.
All right, that's on to me. I will echo that. Thank you for those that are still here this evening. I do appreciate you coming out. And we'll remind everybody that there are still seven days. If you had more to add on this evening, we are still accepting written comments for seven days. Correct, staff? So October 28th will be the end of the comment period, so please feel free to submit as many letters as you'd like in between now and October 28th, and the staff will be happy to respond to those. And with that, I will go ahead and move the staff recommendation, which is, well, I guess, can we, to direct the preparation of the final EIR, even with that seven-day still open? Okay. We're going to go ahead and move the staff recommendation to prepare the final EIR.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments or deliberation?
I know it's not a word, but could I, if you must direct the staff to pursue the EIR, couldn't you say, "Stop, hold on"?
Thank you for your comments. At this time, we have a motion in a second to prepare that final EIR. There is the opportunity for the, for that motion not to pass, and there could be an alternate motion in its place. But in my opinion, I'll just stay where I'm at with it. I think it makes sense to go ahead and prepare the final environmental impact report, and so the staff can respond to all of those drafts, all those questions about the concerns that are there, so. Any further deliberation or comments? Please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Yes.
Cronus Sabaniano.
Yes.
Devlin.
Aye.
And Raythal.
Yes.
And motion carries.
With that, we'll move to the miscellaneous portion of the agenda. It's the planning director's report.
Nothing to report this evening.
All right, miscellaneous scheduling items.
The next meeting will be on November 4th.
And any absences over the next? Everyone will be here on the 4th?
I will not be here on the 4th.
All right. Commissioner Cronus Sabanianos.
There might also be a good chance I might not be on the 4th here.
We have a potential two absences on the 4th. Any others? All right, any on November 18th? All right, we'll move on to public comments.
And no further public comments.
All right, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all for sticking it out tonight. It's 9:28.